Welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to our first hybrid school committee meeting. I want to welcome everyone who is joining us tonight here in person, on Boston City TV, and on Zoom. I'm going to ask everyone here in the chamber to please turn off the volume on your laptops or other devices so that it does not interfere with the audio for tonight's meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee, under the "September 13th Meeting" link. For those joining us in person, you can access the meeting documents by scanning the QR code that's posted by the doors. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The meeting will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. The recording will be available in all of the BPS languages. The committee is pleased to offer live simultaneous interpretation, virtually, in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabavariano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. The Zoom interpretation feature has been activated. Zoom participants should click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Because we are now meeting in person and providing a hybrid option, we've made a few adjustments to our meeting format. First, we're beginning our meetings at 6:00 PM to allow for travel time during the evening commute. Sign up for public comment will now close at 5:00 PM. The committee will continue to offer two public comment periods, with the first comment period limited to one hour. Priority will be given to those testifying in person. Time permitting, the committee will then open it up to virtual testimony. After one hour, anyone who has not testified will have an opportunity to do so at the end of the meeting. As we move forward with this new format, the committee will continue to examine what's working or not working well and make adjustments as needed. We'll begin with the approval of minutes. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the August 30, 2023, school committee as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. We'll now move on to superintendent's report. I present to you our Superintendent Mary Skipper.
Thank you, Chair Robinson. Good evening to everyone. It's very nice to actually see everyone in person, so, welcome. I want to begin by sharing an update on the Systemic Improvement Plan, which we call our SIP. It has been just over a year since we began SIP implementation. We know we have a lot of work to do to improve our systems, but the work of the SIP is all about continuous improvement. As I've said before, and the Council of Great City Schools outlined, this work cannot be done overnight, but it must be done with urgency and done in a way that creates lasting systems. We will not get everything working perfectly immediately, but progress can and should be the measurement of our success. So I'd like to drill down into a few areas, the first being transportation. In the area of transportation, we've made tremendous progress in hiring and are fully staffed for bus drivers for the first time since the COVID-19 pandemic, and we have nearly 200 additional bus monitors on staff compared to the start of the last school year. Our initial on-time performance data for the beginning of the school year is showing increases as well, with an 11% point increase between the first day of school of 2022 and the first day of school in 2023. We also have had all bus routes covered for both the morning and afternoon, so no uncovered buses. On the screen, you can see the past seven years of on-time performance data. This data is not exactly the same comparison year to year because of several factors. The pandemic, when we only had a small number of buses running on the road and no other cars in the road, but it does give a sense of our progress. This is an example of continuous improvement, and we know there's more to be done, but we are heading in the right direction and will continue to look for efficiencies with transdev and our drivers during the school year. In special education, I'm very happy to welcome Kay Seal as the district's new chief of specialized services. Kay started at the end of August, and she's already hit the ground running. She will lead the work to launch inclusive planning teams, which we call IPTs, this fall at every school as part of the district-wide implementation of inclusive education. Regional coaches will support this work so that we can ensure access to strong Tier One instruction and services. As we plan for inclusion district-wide, we are working closely with our families and our partners at the BTU every step of the way. We have gathered feedback from various stakeholders through the racial equity planning tools on drafts of the Inclusive Education Plan. These include SPEDPAC, D-LAC, the ELL Task Force, the Inclusion Working Group, and our city partners ANDESI. We are currently updating the Inclusive Education Plan to reflect the input of all of these stakeholders, and our team anticipates submitting a final draft of the Inclusive Education Plan to ANDESI by the end of the month. In the area of facilities, one of the commitments in the SIP was to renovate bathrooms in at least 15 schools. Since the spring, the BPS Facilities Team has launched bathroom renovation projects in 16 schools. Many of these projects are major gut renos with new layouts and the addition of gender-neutral and accessible bathrooms, new ductwork and exhaust fan upgrades, new low-flow toilet fixtures with automated flushers meters, electric hand dryers, and improvements to floors, ceilings, lighting, tile, and paint. As I've visited our schools, I make it a point to look at the bathroom renovations and have joined ANDESI in some of their walkthroughs. I'm excited to share that they look fantastic, which you can see from the photos on the screen. And our most important stakeholders, our students, agree. One student described the renovated bathrooms as a spa experience, and another compared them to a fancy hotel. Construction is expected to be complete at 15 schools by the end of 2023. Lastly, you'll hear an update later tonight from Capital Planning about our long-term facilities plan and how we are working to make decisions about our buildings and spaces where learning takes place. The long-term facilities plan is a SIP deliverable and is due to ANDESI by the end of the calendar year. Just a few other general SIP updates. Per the Council of Great City Schools' recommendation, we worked over the spring and summer to create the structure of the Office of Emergency Management, and both the Director and Assistant Director have been hired and will start the week of 9/25. All of our schools have completed and submitted their safety plans and are in the process of conducting required drills as part of the beginning of the school year. We start the year fully staffed with safety specialists, and we have added 18 community connector coordinators to help support our students across the regions, both during school hours and at events in the afternoon and evenings. We've also hired restorative practice specialists to work in the regions, building capacity within our schools to create a climate and culture that restorative justice can be used in. I will continue to update this committee and the public on the work with our partners at ANDESI. I want to thank Chair Robinson, Mayor Wu, Commissioner Riley for the collaboration on this important work for our students. And now for the first day of school. This is my favorite time of year. So, at first, I just want to thank the team, many of whom are in this room tonight, who worked so hard to ensure that we had a strong start to the school year. On the first day of school, the mayor and I rode an electric bus from the bus yard and greeted students with city councillor Luigi at the Mildred Avenue K-12, um, K-8. I also went to the Holmes, and to the Frederick, and to the Carter, where I was also joined by city councillor Julia Mejia, Chair Robinson, and Vice Chair Michael O'Neill. It was really a wonderful day on every level, and in so many areas, we started the year stronger than the year before. So, for instance, to ensure we had appropriate staffing to begin the school year, our human capital staff worked around the clock, including weekends, to process all of our new hires. I mean, really big, big lift from them. As we started the school year, we started in a strong position with our classrooms, with 97% of those classrooms filled with teachers. This year, we hired 1,491 new teachers, 300 more than last year. 391 new parays, which is almost 150 more than last year. And as I said earlier, we're fully staffed in critical needs areas like safety specialists. I know one question that's been raised is around teacher certification and waivers. As we do every fall, we'll be sending a notice to families whose children are in classrooms with educators who are on a certification waiver. As of right now, we have about 500 staff whose position requires a certification waiver, and that's out of almost 5,000 of those positions. And they're really all at different points of the process in getting their license. Most of the 500, we expect to get their licensure during the school year. We've increased our offering of development programs through our human capital office and our CD department to support educators getting their certs. For example, we offer a free MTEL Prep class and created a program specifically for educators who are interested in getting their special education or ESL certifications. We will continue to support our educators seeking certification, but we also know that our educators are more than just what is on paper. I want to assure families that if your educator's on a waiver, it does not mean they're not an excellent teacher who cares deeply about their student's success and can teach with excellence. Staff may already hold a license in certain grade areas and need to expand their licensure. Or staff may be relocating from another state, and they need to get certified in Massachusetts. There's lots of reasons why someone might not have their cert yet. We also know that completing the MTEL has historically posed barriers for our educators of color and for those for whom English is not their first language. We will continue to prioritize ensuring our educators reflect our students by hiring qualified teachers and supporting their efforts to attain a license. Looking at our student attendance, while the year is still early, we're already excited about the first five days. We're currently seeing an average of 88% of our students present. It's a pro, we have, as you've seen in the past, that's about 5% over, five points over what we have seen in the past. We also have 16 schools who have over 95% attendance, and many of our schools are experiencing higher-than-average return rates for students. These are all just really great signs of people's investment in BPS in really hearing our cry for partnership around getting our students back into school on a daily basis. In terms of our school facilities, the heat came just in time for the start of school, as many of us who are out there know. Because of the work by our Facilities Department that happened this last year and this summer, we've started the school year with 90% of our schools having AC. For the remaining 10% without AC, we made sure that they had access to, you know, fans, cold water. We tried to ventilate as much as we could and opened the windows in the cooler periods of time in the day and night. We'll continue to work with our Facilities Team to explore every possibility to get these remaining schools air conditioning. Many of them are limited by old electrical infrastructure, and that's a problem that we continue to work urgently to resolve. I know it doesn't make up for the lack of ACs, certainly, but the team passed out 3,800 ice popsicles to students at the schools without AC on that Friday. A big thank you to Stop &amp; Shop for this. It was a generous donation. Our food service department, you know, helped to arrange that. And also to BTU for their support and idea around it, and they helped with the distribution of the popsicles. Lastly, we kicked off the first day of kindergarten this past Monday at the Higginson and Hurley Schools. It was so wonderful to see how excited our students, you know, were. They just had such joy in their face and excitement. There were certainly some tears from parents handing off, you know, their little three-year-old or four-year-old or five-year-old, and really, they spoke like they couldn't believe that the student had already reached the milestone of going to school. But it was overall such a day full of joy. And our teachers and our principals and our counselors and all of our staff in our schools just did such an amazing job welcoming our families on the first day, the second day, the third day. Just made me incredibly proud. This year, we have over, we have 5,131 families registered for kindergarten. The breakdown, we welcomed back 1,253 new K-2 families, 2,417 K-1 families, and 493 K-0 families. This is a slight increase from previous years. Again, another positive thing with enrollment. Overall, it's just been a great start to the school year. Again, just a big thank you to every single staff member, regardless of what position, whether it was the nurse, the cafeteria worker, the custodian, bus monitors, food service monitors, calf workers. Everyone contributed in their own way to make the start of school a really special time. And a big thank you to our families, you know, truly takes a village, and our families play such a critical role in the schooling of their children and in building strong school communities. So I'm really looking forward to a great year ahead. Few bright spots, there were many, but I'll keep this one focused, and it was on the Reengagement Center canvassing event that we did. You know, in most major urban districts, we saw an increase, we saw an increase in chronically absent students. Been several articles on this, just the continued struggle of recovery when it comes to attendance. And I, you know, in Boston, I'm extremely proud, and in BPS, we actually saw a 5% decrease of chronically absent students. And there's lots of people that contribute to why that is. Our family liaisons who do home visits, our supervisors of attendance, Brian Marks, who leads them, you know. And one of them was, you know, that we worked, one partner that we worked deeply with is the Reengagement Center. So this year, we had, for the annual knocking-on-the-door event that the mayor and I participated in, we had 279 students was the goal to reach with 54 volunteers. And of the 279 students, 127 were identified as chronically absent, 152 as dropout. The event itself is part of just a larger strategy that we did throughout the summer with almost 1,000 students to really help them understand what their options are, to stay in school or to come back to school. This is an area we're deeply committed to, particularly post-pandemic, when so many students fell off track. Right now, at this very moment, our schools are reaching out to students who have not yet reported and those who have already shown an absence, just to be able to reinforce how much we want every one of our students back. Big thank you to Manny Allen, the Reengagement Center Director, along with the staff, to Brian Marks and the supervisors of attendance, and for everyone that participated that day in just reaching out and hearing student stories and making a connection with the families. In terms of enrollment and engagement, on Monday, 8/28, our Office of Community Engagement, led by Chief Ortiz, facilitated a virtual back-to-school meeting by Zoom to share with families how we prepared to welcome their children back. We gathered information from families via robocalls. We did texts, we did emails, we did weekly parent newsletters. In all, we had 800 families attend, in fact, a little bit more than that. And really, what was special was being able to really engage with members of the BPS staff and leadership teams to get answers to their questions. Some were simple questions, others much more spoke about needing support in the process of what schooling means and how to get involved. But we, you know, we answered questions around transportation, COVID-19 protocols, special education, transportation, connection with schools, and how to make that connection with the school leader. What I was most proud of was we were really able to connect with every parent in the languages that were presented. We had 10 languages, including ASL, and in 90 minutes with our multilingual team, we answered over 300 questions in five different languages live. And so just our ability to connect with every family was, for me, just a testimony to the hard work of our multilingual team and our Office of Family Engagement. We're also excited to share that there'll be upcoming community meetings across the city. I want to meet and hear from all of our communities directly about their students' experience and how we can make it better, and so we'll be publishing those and doing some invitations around that. And I look forward to meeting as many people in person this year as possible. The BPS helpline also actively was supporting families, and this has been throughout registration and the start of school. Everything from questions through, like, any of the needs that they may have pertaining to how they can support their children's experience, especially with the back-to-school process. The team's logged over 2,000 calls and emails. The team's logged over two thousand calls and emails since the summer to connect with families. Um, and, you know, most communications in the last two weeks have been about assignment, transportation, technical assistance, things like that. Um, but just the fact that our staff has been able to respond so quickly and we're looking for ways to even improve on that, I think, is another example of continuous improvement. Um, as of today, we have a little over five thousand students. Um, this is a slight increase when you compare it to last year. We do expect that number to come down, particularly as we contact families of students who haven't reported yet um, and discover that they've moved and relocated, or they're going to a different system or charter school. Um, and so we will continue to report out to school committee on what the enrollment numbers ultimately settle at. But it's certainly a very strong start for us. Um, and I'll give that further update in October. Uh, grants finally later this evening, um, you will vote on the grants package. Uh, some of the previous meetings, um, members have asked for more details on our grants. I want to thank Dr. Alkins in particular, who's really worked to help us understand better um, how we can share this information and make it more accessible. Going forward, I'm asking our grants team to include an, uh, an outcome summary and to indicate if the grant is reoccurring um, so that members and, and the public can see the impact of the grant funding. Tonight, we're presenting fifteen grants in total. Um, it's about seventy-six million dollars. Beginning with the federal entitlement grants, we will include Title One. Title One provides funds to school districts and schools to support students experiencing poverty. Title Two, which focuses on improving teacher quality. Title Three, which supports our multilingual learners. Title Four, which funds supplemental services or supports in three priority areas. Access to a well-rounded education, improving student learning conditions, and supporting advancements in technology. And the final last entitlement grant, um, is our I D A, which is for Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. The budgets for each of these entitlement grants was presented with our F Y, uh, twenty-four budget proposal back in February. At that time, we based the budget on the expected award amounts. Tonight, we are asking you to vote and approve the final award amount that we received from D E S I. The other ten grants fit into several categories. There's, uh, some that support our adult education program. There are investments in playgrounds, which is funded by the Community Preservation Act. There are extended learning time grants for several schools. Um, we clearly will have more information for each of the grants, including the grant type, the funding source, that can all be found in the grants package that we provided. We also have several members from the grants team here to support any questions that members may have. Uh, and with that, Chair, I know it was a long report, but lots of, lots of great stuff. I conclude my report and I hand it to you.
Thank you so much. I'll now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee. And I'd like to remind my colleagues about our agreed-upon norm that each, we take about five minutes, one or two questions. And I would like to remind B P S staff to also be brief in your responses. And if you have additional questions, I'll come around a second round. So we don't have little Zoom hands, so.
Real hands?
No, real hands. So I'll go down one end and then come back and go down. So you can start with Ms. Palanco Garcia.
Buenas noches, Madam Chair. Buenas noches to all.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you, um, Superintendent. Thank you for your report.
Tuve la oportunidad de venir el miércoles en la mañana al Distrito Educativo a inscribir personalmente a mi sobrino que acaba de venir de República Dominicana.
I had the opportunity to come Wednesday morning to enroll my, um, nephew who just came from the Dominican Republic.
Eh, la experiencia para inscribir lo quiero compartir con ustedes que fue muy buena. Eh, la señora Sonia Gómez, que es la directora de, eh, de el Welcome Center, eh, y su equipo están haciendo buen trabajo.
I want to share with you that my experience enrolling my nephew was really good. Um, Sonia Gómez from the Welcome Center and her team are doing a good job.
Y vi, pude ver la cantidad de estudiantes nuevos que van a ver, pero sobre todo hay un, una gran cantidad de estudiantes que son aprendices del idioma inglés, que van a ser aprendices del idioma inglés en este país.
I also saw the number or the, um, of students, of new students who have enrolled. And it's a good, a big number of students who are English language learners who will start learning in this country.
Siempre nosotros hemos insistido en que el idioma nativo, que, que los estudiantes puedan ser alfabetizados en ese idioma nativo, marca una gran diferencia para ellos.
We've always have insisted that the students should be taught in the native language.
Nosotros tenemos que adaptarnos, verdad, al idioma de este país porque llegamos como inmigrantes y tenemos que abrazar esta cultura. Pero nosotros tenemos que insistir que nuestros hijos no pierdan su identidad cultural de sus países.
We know that as immigrants, we have to adapt and learn the language here. Um, but we also have to embrace the culture of our fam, families or our kids. We don't want them to lose that.
Pude ver en el reporte, escuché en el reporte, que se contrataron mil cuatrocientos noventa y uno nuevos educadores.
I saw in your report that you, you were able to hire one thousand four hundred ninety-one new educators.
Tomando en cuenta que nosotros tenemos una gran población que son aprendices del idioma inglés, mi pregunta es, ¿cuántos de esos educadores son maestros realmente bilingües? O que dominan más del idioma inglés.
So taking that into account and given the population of English language learners, my question to you is, out of that amount of educators, how many of them are fully bilingual or are able to dominate another language, uh, besides English?
Through you, Chair. So, um, this is an excellent question uh, because we are definitely seeing big increases, as you observed, um, in the amount of students who are rolling who are recently arrived immigrants. And so, um, this has been very intentional for us in our hiring to be able to hire bilingual staff. Uh, right now, the Human Capital Office is trying to process everyone to make sure everybody gets on-boarded. And so I'll report out in the next meeting, um, more of the data of the actual hiring. So I don't know the number or the percent right now of bilingual staff, but it is something that we are now watching and paying attention to. Additionally, um, many of the programs that were designed for certification is, uh, to be able to support those educators for whom English is not their first language who may struggle passing the exam because English is not their first language. We are working to develop support programs for them to help them get that certification. Uh, so this is a big concentration for us. It's also not just the classroom staff, it's the whole school staff of making sure that, um, you know, we recognize, uh, that, you know, whether it's a student also connecting with their nurse or connecting with their counselor, really critical that they can communicate um, and that they can see themselves in that person. So uh, I will report out at the next school committee meeting with more data on the, on bilingual percentage. But know that it was, uh, definitely a priority for us in our hiring.
Muchas gracias.
Dr. Alkins?
Well, first, um, I want to congratulate you on the first week uh, and everybody here on the, the first week and all of our students, um, on a, uh, first week. And, um, yeah, just thinking about what that first week for me was like and a, a lot of remembering, a lot of remembering. Um, but thank you for the, the update. It definitely seems like we are on the right track to start. Um, and just like, uh, a, a couple of questions, I think, picking up, uh, where, um, Member Palanco Garcia had left off. Do we have any sense of how many more native language instruction classrooms that we're on track to produce for this year? Um, as compared to last year? That's my first question. Um, second, I think in the future would also be beneficial for this committee to perhaps hear from uh, the re-engagement center directly and also family liaisons just to see like what exactly they're experiencing in the process of trying to re-engage folks so that we can better, uh, design our community meetings, uh, around this. So I'd be, I'd very much look forward to, um, to a presentation from them.
Uh, thank you, through you, Chair. Uh, so, uh, I'll start at the, the back end. Um, I know that Director Allen would welcome the opportunity to come forward and be able to share just all the good work and how they work in concert. Like, for example, um, in adult education, one of the things that we did in restructuring this past year was to uh, increase the positions that could, uh, teach students for whom they were in E L D level one, two, three. As a way for older students who perhaps are making that transition from one of our schools and, uh, still want to continue for their diploma, but they may age out or they may not be able to commit to a certain schedule. They have adult ed as an option. So we've been trying to build that capacity, particularly for students that we know are more susceptible for dropping out. I think that the, right now, part of why it's so important for us to call and resolve the D N Rs or what we call the, the D N R reports um, is because it tells us what our seatage actually is. For us to launch programs without knowing if, first of all, the programs are full because there's certain students that haven't come, um, that will be the part, the resolve that will happen. We also have about two hundred students that are still testing right now for an E L D placement. So once all of this resolves kind of over the next two weeks, we'll have a much clearer picture of whether we need to add programming or we can actually kind of reshuffle. We do, there are a couple of spots that, um, I have uh, concern in the sense of like that I, I believe we're going to need to have some, a better solution. We, um, we definitely have a large pocket of students who are E L D level one, beginning English, um, for whom they're eighteen or older. Those students in our education system in general in Massachusetts come in and they're expected to pass M cast, they're expected to become proficient in English. Um, and they, uh, you know, are, what we know historically here is many also have life situations where they have to work. So enrolling the first year in high school works in the sense that they can learn enough English, but then often they have this terrible choice of, do I work or do I continue? So we know we have some spots where we need to come up with a unique solution, which is why in part we started building out adult ed, um, as a, as a one way to approach it, but also with an alternative ed looking to build capacity. Um, we also see, uh, pockets in our, in our second and third grade with large numbers um, of recently arrived immigrants. We also just, I think, as we've seen kind of across Massachusetts, many of our families who recently arrived are coming with nothing and they need complete wraparound. And so this is going to be something that we're working very hard, um, through our family liaisons, through city agencies and making connections to figure out how to give those resources to the families and the students. Um, so there's, there's, there'll be a lot more, uh, to come on my reporting out on the actual numbers. But we do need to kind of let some of this settle. We are already hard at work though, thinking about it and working toward the solutions for the families.
Um, and just a, a follow-up to a question I know we've, we've had before, which is where, um, are we, I guess, in the data for understanding the impact of summer programming? And, and getting the update there.
So, um, through you, Chair. So summer programming, uh, will be on the docket for, um, uh, through the superintendent's report. I believe it's the next one. We're in the process right now of, um, surveying the families. This is always our look back to them. Uh, we had an outstanding summer. We, it was our largest ever. And what we're most concerned about is talking to the families to see what the students' experiences were. Um, would you send your student back? Did they enjoy it? Were there other things they would have liked to do? And then in the, the programs in where there was some baseline, being able to look at that baseline data to say, did the program accomplish what it was setting out to do, whether it was enrichment or academics or language development or whatever it was. So that's, that's the, we get that data like during this time. Uh, and I know that the team is hard at work, um, in family engagement, getting, getting the survey data back.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go down that way and come back to you. Ms. Domet, do you have any questions, comments?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Superintendent Skipper, uh, and your team for the report for today. A lot of excite, exciting news, a lot of progress that we're seeing from last year. Um, I do have a couple of questions that could be follow-up probably for the next report. I know, uh, one of the members did ask for numbers in terms of educators when it comes to multilingual, but I would love to see if possible, not only the educators, but any other roles and positions staff have been hired because our students are interacting not only with educators in the classroom, but they are interacting with the monitors, the school drivers. So I would, I would just like to see how we're doing that holistically, not just inside of the classrooms, but also in the other spaces, um, that our students and families, uh, are engaging in. Um, I also wanted to note, um, the Welcome Center has definitely been pretty helpful for some of the families that reached out to me with some challenges. First day, first week is always, uh, can be hard, especially if they're navigating the district for the first time. But I did wanted to hear a little bit of how the district, um, does address, for example, a family that brings a student to a school and apparently the student is not listed as part of that, uh, particular community. So how does, um, one, how does a family is able to submit that concern? And what is the process for the district to help, um, make sure that the student know exactly where they were assigned? So that's, that would be my first question.
Sure. Uh, through you, Chair. So I think it, it starts with the welcoming center, um, making the connection with the family about what the options and the possibilities are. Um, right now, we see coming into the welcoming center, uh, a lot of new registrations. But we also see transfers. Um, and so really kind of working with the family to understand what the options are where they live. Um, and then, of course, when that happens, if it is a bus implication, either transportation for a regular education student or a special education student, um, the, the Welcome Center works closely with special education and with our Office of Multilingual Learners. So the idea is to try to provide the parent in transportation. So the, so it's really to provide the parent kind of one-stop shop and give as much information as possible. And if there's something that can't be answered, then that's where our helpline exists, right? The transportation hotline. So there's, we're trying to create as many avenues for parents as possible.
Thank you for that. My last question, um, you shared a lot about the new hires that we've had and also the number, I know we're going to see more about enrollment, um, sometime in the future, but what are the efforts that the district is doing to retain these new folks that are being hired? Uh, especially the educators, especially the bus drivers, because that has definitely been a huge challenge. And I know the team has definitely been putting a lot of effort to get folks to come to the job, but how are we going to make sure that they stay? Um, so that's something that I would love to hear, but also how are we maintaining and improving the student attendance? I know the numbers look really good for first week, but how are we going to keep that momentum?
Great. So I'll start with just the student attendance piece. So I think this is really where students, knowing that they can count on relationships in their school, that their school is a welcoming place, that even if they're struggling, it's a place that they can go and get support. And if it's not working out and they need to make a different decision, that we really are intentional about giving them the options. We put a lot of effort into building out the options menu. Um, each of the schools, uh, or many of the, the high schools, particularly the open enrollments, also have programming for if students fall behind and, um, say they would be retained and that might be a cause for them leaving or uh, dropping out, that there's ways that they can accelerate by staying there and working in, uh, an acceleration program that the school's designed. So we're fostering lots of what I would call tier two and tier three at the high school levels. I think it also starts at seventh grade, which is like for the high schools that are starting seventh, who are your students? For the high schools that are starting ninth, who are your students? What do they need? Where have they been? What's the journey been? You know, where, where are they with their credits? What do we see and what do they tell us they struggle with or they excel at? And then really trying to be asset-based, like very positive, build on their strengths, build on what motivates them, connect them with the adults in the community and in the, in the school community. But then also give them the supports they need to be able to address the, the areas that they might be struggling with. In terms of the attendance itself, we have, um, a really good system right now with our supervisors of attendance, which are set up by the regions. We actually invested in this area last year. It wasn't set up that way. Uh, and this really enables the supervisor attendance to be part of the fabric of the region. Um, and they can deploy and we've incentivized, we have an incentive, um, program that uh, we do with gift cards, um, for better attendance. Uh, recognizing the, you know, the students and finding ways that the schools can celebrate students that are coming on a regular basis. that the schools can celebrate students that are coming on a regular basis. All of these are the types of things that cause students to want to come. It's also the reasons why students stop coming. So it's, it's getting at those. So I'm proud of the work we're doing with attendance. We have a, we have obviously a long way to go. It's not just a school system issue, it's a community issue. And that's where we have to be working with our community, helping parents to understand when a student misses a day of school, just to take it off, they're missing a great deal of their academics. And then they fall behind and they feel detached and then it goes from there. So lots there. In terms of the staffing, retention, retention, I would say it's, you know, we call it retention and cultivation and diversification, but it's, it's really, it's really, for, for us, it's about helping an employee in whatever role they are, have the best working experience possible. And then also helping them to vision and dream what else they would like to do in, in their life, in the changes of life as a career, that they can do within BPS. When I started as a teacher in 1989, if it wasn't for, you know, leaders and people in BPS helping to develop me and showing me opportunities, I probably wouldn't have stayed with the system. I would have gone somewhere else. So I think we owe it to our employees, regardless of the position that they're in, to help them figure out, if they come in as a parent and they really want to be a teacher, how do we invest in that person to help them do that? So we're trying to develop pipeline programs, you know, all, all the way from like if you're coming in as a parent and, you know, this is where Committee Member Blanco Garcia has been extremely helpful, but if you're a parent and you start off in your parent liaison and then you say, well, you know what, I can help with bus and I can do the bus monitor or I can work in food, how can we do that? Or then if I've done that and I want to be a parent professional, how do I do that? So you really set out sort of like a career, am I being really loud?
No, if you could just please slow down a little bit.
Oh, sorry. I get excited. Sorry about that. But, but it's really each individual that we have, we owe that to. And I think if we foster a culture like that in BPS, people will see this as the place they can grow and retire from.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you Superintendent for your report and great kudos to the entire team, many of whom are sitting in this room who worked extraordinarily long hours for the past two months to get ready for this past week. So I just want to, as my colleagues have done as well, want to acknowledge the hard work of so many of you here and, and others who are probably watching at home, even though they'll be back at work at about five or six tomorrow morning. So thank you for everyone for the work you did for opening schools. As the Superintendent mentioned, I joined here at a couple of schools along with the Chair, and I was also in a school that had new air conditioning this year, the window units, and had been in that school on opening days in the past when it was insufferable. And it was a big difference this year. And it was nice to see students focused on learning right away instead of being affected by the heat. And I look forward to us finding solutions for the schools that are left. I know we're working hard on that. I, I did want to call out Superintendent, you mentioned we, along with the Chair, we were at the Frederick and the Carter, and which is a shared space for the Carter School that is in swing space right now while their new building is being built. And to see the love that the Frederick community has given to the Carter community, which is a very special community for some of our most challenged youth, it was amazing to see. And they did such a great job welcoming them last year and we saw it on display this year. So I just wanted to give particular thanks to Principal McGoldrick there and her team for what, at the Frederick, for what they have done to welcome the Carter students. And it's really a model as we build and renovate and, you know, move schools around in coming years, we are going to have to be putting schools in swing space while new buildings are being built. And how those communities have worked together has been exemplary and will be a model, I think, for other schools. So I want to make sure to call that out. Superintendent, you talked about the bathrooms and I just want to clarify one thing you said. You said DESI required 15, in fact, 16. Are 16 done or was that the number that you said would be done by the end of 2023?
No, we'll actually have 15 done by the end of 2023. There's another bathroom that we ran into, both chain supply, but also the, the amount of dollars triggered some other things that needed to happen with that building, with procurement. So that, that has been pushed and that will, I, I don't, if, I think it's January, February, it's like shortly after that, I'm not sure.
That's of the 16.
Of the 16.
And then how many more are we going to be doing?
Well, we're planning that now. That's one of the things Facilities is looking at is, is now looking at the next, you know, level of schools. We need to, you know, do this deep crosswalk with what comes out of the Facilities Condition Report, the Assessment Report, as well as the work that you'll see tonight, so that we're coordinating the buildings we're investing in.
Okay, thank you. And just moving along about transportation, I loved hearing that they were, all the bus routes were covered this year because we had so many examples last year of uncovered routes. How are we doing about athletics and field trips? Do we have enough coverage? They're probably just starting up this week, I would assume.
Well, football's been, been happening for a bit, but yes, right now, everything has been great. As we know, we, we finished last year in the spring at a 97% and worked our way up to that with athletics on time with the buses. We have had no uncovered bus routes. We have, fortunately, because of the work we did in building the pipeline for drivers with CDL license, we have more drivers than the buses. And so as a result, we haven't had anything uncovered and the athletics and the field trips have been able to run.
That's great. Thanks to the Transportation Team for that. And how are we looking on afternoon performance? You were showing us morning performance.
So the afternoon's been strong. In, in fact, in a couple of the days where the, the morning, like for instance with kindergarten, often the parent understandably wants to say goodbye, take a picture. We generally wait in the first week of school a little bit longer at the stops for the students because we don't want to leave a student for a minute or two. So in some cases, the afternoon's actually been a little bit ahead of the morning. But we can report that out at the next school committee meeting and do a similar chart for you.
And, and similar to that, I know another piece of the puzzle, and I, and I couldn't quite see it on this chart, is buses that don't have the GPS working. So DESI actually considers that like a zero, right? But haven't you taken extensive steps to reduce that?
Correct. You know, this time last year was around 25% had the GPS missing. We actually alerted DESI to this in last August when we came across it in the data. We've taken extensive steps, you know, to, you know, such as making sure that the catchments are accurate for the GPS technically, making sure that the GPS units are functioning correctly. Often we see the disparity when we have a driver who's covering or a bus covering for another bus and there isn't, there aren't any students to pick up, so they don't necessarily hit the catchment for the GPS. Those are, we're down to like 5%. And, you know, I think that's one of the things is for a district our size, there's going to be some amount that every single day doesn't have a GPS data attached to it because something malfunctions or because you have a driver covering and they don't hit the catchment. But 5% is down from the 23%. I think we're at a point now where we really feel like all of the, the strategies we put into place are working.
So just to understand that, when you talk about the catchment, if, if I understand it properly, so that's like at a school, they're supposed to pull up from here to here and instead they pull up there? And it's not, is that?
Correct. Or sometimes the, the bus loads the students before they actually trigger the catchment and then they pull out and around, so that bus doesn't trip the GPS, so.
Thanks. And, and my last question is about, because you're talking about enrollment and we're filled in many places, right? And, and we've had some nice bumps and attendance is higher. How is this going to impact wait lists and how we're tracking wait lists and when we notify parents or students of, hey, something opened up?
So I think we, we are already notifying, right? In, in some cases where we can see a wait list is going to clear, but for the most part, we like to wait until we've been able to do that DNR, the did not report, to get the most accurate picture of what's available in the school. So that's, that's generally the point at which the eighth day that we begin notifying the parents.
So if, if parents are on a wait list, what, what's the message to them? Is it one week, two weeks, three weeks?
We, we'll be processing that data. I can ask for an exact date if, let's see, if Mark was...
I can answer.
Okay, great.
So we are calling wait lists. We've called over a thousand families up.
I'm sorry, you may just want to come over to our microphone, sorry.
We have called wait lists, over a thousand families right now, and those are going like every Thursday and then Monday again. DNR process will begin on Monday, so that's for the students who did not report. And we would then use those, those are for grades one to 12. It's Monday and then for kindergarten is on September 20th.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. That's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great. Again, yes, congratulations to all and thank you for the report. One thing you did not mention was about food service. I know that we were excited about some new opportunities. Can you give us a bit of an update on what's happening with food?
So incredibly proud of food service. Annalise, as our leader, fearless leader of food service, is new to the district, but mighty in her approach. We are, you know, this time last year, we had under 50 kitchens that were operational to be able to do what we call scratch or, you know, fresh food cooking. Instead, we were relying mostly on delivered and packaged, although, you know, nutritious and healthy and good tasting. But we, you know, the goal was always to get our kitchens back up. And so this year, we started with 86 kitchens with their ability to cook. And I've been going into the kitchens as I go into the schools and, you know, frankly, the cafeteria staff are thrilled to be able to cook for the students. They just can customize so much more for the, for the kids. We also have a plan for by November to have additional 20 cafeterias up and functional for cooking. So that leaves us with relatively few and those are mostly kitchens that don't either have the space, frankly, or the equipment. And so we'll be analyzing them to see what's possible.
When we were at the Frederick, we got to see the wide range of what was offered, but it was very interesting as we watched students filing past us with their trays, what was or was not on those trays. So that there were lots of healthy options. We got to see the salad bar, but what we saw most often were tacos and corn. And that was only two of maybe 12 things. How are they helping kids to think about options, the healthy options that families would like to see them have choice of and coaching them actually?
Right. So I think, you know, I think our food service would say that all of the food that they're serving is really healthy and good and students will always have some preference, but one of the things we try to do and will be doing more of this year is educating students about food and nutrition. And that is really tying it in relative to the curriculum about what it means to eat healthy and the food groups and portions and things like that. So I think as we get, particularly with the salad bars, as those roll out, which I'm, ecstatic that that's happening, what does it mean to have a second protein in the salad bar? And why is that important if you're, you know, if you're hungry, how eating another protein can actually really fill you up? So it's more, it's, it's an education along with also recognizing students like choice and sometimes they like tacos. So I think it's, I think it's, and pizza, yeah, pizza. So I think it's a, it's a combination of both things, Chair.
Great, thank you. Can you go back and, and tell us again, how many students we think we have at this moment in time? I know there'll be some.
So we have, we have about 50,000. We have what we call did not reports at about 3,500. That's actually less than what we've had previously for did not reports. We will go through the process over the next several days of contacting homes and trying to understand where our young people are. If they have moved, we'll, you know, obviously discharge. Sometimes a student struggles to get back into school or they don't, the family might be new and they don't know how to start the student. So we will unearth all of that in those calls. That's why our family liaisons are critical, our, our supervisor attendants are critical, and our classroom teachers are critical in calling home and having those conversations with our families.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? If not, so if there's no further discussion, I would now like to entertain a motion to receive the Superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Not hearing none, the Superintendent's report is approved. We'll now move on to general public comment. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, caregivers, students and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the Superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. This meeting will feature two public comment periods, with the first comment period limited to one hour. Priority will be given to those testifying in person. Time permitting, the committee will then open it up to virtual testimony. After one hour, anyone who has not testified will have the opportunity to do so at the end of the meeting. We have 15 speakers this evening. Each person will have three minutes to speak and I will remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. If your remarks are longer than three minutes, please email your comments to the committee for distribution. The time that an interpreter uses for English interpretation will not be deducted from a speaker's allotted time. We will pause the timer while the testimony is interpreted into English. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Please state your name, affiliation and what neighborhood you're from before you begin. And please direct your comments to the Chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. We'll begin this evening with our five in-person speakers, beginning with New Yorka De Jesus.
My name is New Yorka De Jesus. I'm a BPS graduate from Dorchester. I'm here to advocate on behalf of a student whose identity I will keep confidential. This student...
Excuse me, could you please just speak into the microphone so we can all hear you?
Sure. This student, I'm going to give a couple of examples of how Boston Arts Academy specifically has been negligent with this student, but she serves as an example of what's going on throughout the district. During the first day of, of her first year as a ninth grader, she was told by, by the school's Dean of Discipline, students like you end up dropping out. Last year, she had 66 days absent and 43 tardies and there was no engagement of an attendance officer. An attendance officer was engaged once I called one. I recommended at another point that the, somebody in the school engaged the best team after, there were two harmful incidences in the school and that didn't occur. There was, after a third incident then occurred, I engaged the best team. This student is now a third-year ninth grader without a single transferable credit. This student showed up to school this week and had to wait for a transcript to be created and they're currently in the building, waiting for an IEP that I was informed is negligently still at a standstill. For this student, a conventional alternative high school is not going to work, including Boston Day in the evening, due to the nature of the student's presentation needs and trauma triggers. I am here to request that this student's IEP be expedited so that inadequate therapeutic out-of-district school placement be made, such as the one I've listed in a document that I've given to Elizabeth. At the very least, BAA had the capacity to advocate and make appropriate timely referrals, yet nothing substantial has been done for years. It is sad that I have exhausted all viable options for advocacy on this student's behalf and that I have to resort to come into a public meeting to have this be documented to ensure some level of accountability, to attempt to prevent further harm. This would be restorative justice. There's so much I can say, there's so much that I've seen, not just with this student, but with plenty other students. And there are a lot of great things that are happening in, in BPS, but this is not one of them. There is a huge, huge need for there to be leaders in the district that are trauma-informed and for the district to be trauma-informed and trauma-responsive, not just for the sake of the students, but for the sake of families and for the sake of staff. We're harming students. And a lot of the behaviors that we see that are harmful, that staff are intimidated by, afraid of, that allow some of the staff to even label students, are simply trauma symptoms and a cry for help. And we need to do better and we're not doing better. And I'm, I'm, I know I've gone over my time, but I'm exhausted, I'm drained. BPS has honestly become a source of, of stress for me. This is, and I don't, I don't mean to be disrespectful, this is the last place I want to be right now, just because of the space I'm in. be right now, just because of the space I'm in. And I'm exhausted, so I'm begging, I'm praying that we expedite this service for this student, that some might wanna start to put, really, she's just trying to be, some people are just trying to push her out. Because if you don't fit the mold, if you don't fit the mold that Diego has, that I had as a BA student, and I'm proud of you, Diego. If, if you don't fit the mold, then you're pushed out. You become a problem. And so if BAA can't serve students that show up with this presentation, then it's not, it's not accessible, right? And every student has a right to an education. And more importantly, really the last thing I'll say, Boston Arts Academy has the arts, right? And that is a huge tool to help process trauma. And I'm talking at this point as a licensed independent clinical social worker.
Mr. Jesus, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I do have your written testimony and we're gonna share that with the-
We need to do better.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Jenkins. He'll be followed by Liza Kagwa McAllister, Michael Kozu and Anne DeGeorge.
Good evening, good evening.
Good evening.
Superintendent, school committee members. My name is Robert Jenkins, class of 1978, Madison Park, Madison Park High. President of the Madison Park Alumni Association, I live in Mattapan. In regards to the Madison Park admissions policy, I would strongly suggest that a working group be comprised of students, teachers, parents, Madison Park alumni, friends of Madison Park, BPS community, BPS community, trades and businesses, and city and state agencies and other partners to come up with a state-of-the-art admissions policy to complement the updated draft that will be presented later on tonight. In two years, Madison Park will double its enrollment and be a seventh to 12th grade school. All input is needed to make sure that we turn the only vocational school in the city a diamond, not only in the state, but in our country. My parents made a choice 48 years ago to send me, like other of my classmates' parents, to Madison Park because it was a magnet school. Magnet school that offered programs that other BPS schools at that time did not. It was a turbulent time in Boston history of education. I don't wanna venture down that road. Madison Park gave me the opportunity as a double major. I was in the college program as well as in the theater arts program, which we want to encourage students and parents to buy into Madison, as well as the extra curriculum, sports programs and other programs. That gave me the opportunity to attend a prep school, go on to college and make me the person that I am today. And I give back to my alma mater. Madison Park needs to be a hub school. It fits the criteria, centrally located, you can offer a lot of community. Trust me, I have insight like others, like others, and it's just not a recommendation. Madison, Madison Park cannot be, cannot be a place to place students who don't want to be there. They have to wanna come there. There's an old saying, you can't tell me where I'm going if you've never been. I would like to go forward on swimming pools in community centers. BPS can't do it alone. You can't. You don't cover the buildings after school. It could, becomes an issue. BCYF pulled out of Madison Park four years ago. We have three swimming pools that for the past three summers, we, there was no usage of them after the summer school program was there. It's not BPS's fault, but BPS gets, gets blamed for it. We need more CPOs, those are certified pool operators. We only have two in the city. That's ridiculous. CPOs, they backwash, they control the pools, they make sure the pools are taken care of. Lastly, the Matter Hunt Community Center comes to me as mine too. They're under construction. It's a beautiful building over there. Gotta light a fire and get it done. I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Liza Kagwa McAllister.
Thank you, Superintendent Skipper and school committee members. And special thanks to all the good reports that we heard today and the improvements that you reported on. I was really grateful to hear that as a parent to an O'Brien eighth grader. I live in Rosendale, but I am here to testify that no amount of state-of-the-art facilities will mitigate the damage that a move to West Roxbury would inflict on the O'Brien community. My son and his OB friends, a few of whom also live in Rosendale, have voiced how much this change would hurt nearly all their peers. And they don't want it. Their gut reaction of solidarity is a marker of what makes the OB special and of what is now at risk. If this move is instituted, the community makeup of O'Brien will shift dramatically as families from Roxbury, East Boston, Dorchester and other neighborhoods spare their children the 4:30 wake-ups and multiple hours of commuting to West Roxbury each day. The idea that bus shuttles will make these community, these commutes livable is not reality, given the current performance of both school and public transportation, Boston traffic and the ongoing costs to maintain that these supports will require. In addition, how will students who stay for sports, academic help or other activities get home? How will they make it to their partners in other parts of the city? West Roxbury is not an accessible neighborhood. How can shuttle buses in an already burdened system be justified? It is not equitable to prioritize specialized transportation for exampled school students when the current system is not getting to school, students to school on time as it is. And even today, we saw that the rates of lateness are still between 25 and 40%. It is not just when those dollars could go to making the other district high schools more resourced. The proposed site in West Roxbury offers nothing in community and institutional partnerships compared to what the O'Brien currently enjoys. How can Home Depot, Savers and even the VA Hospital compare to the existing partnerships with Longwood Medical Area, with Wentworth, with MIT, with local colleges and other partners? OB's current location has several unused buildings and underutilized spaces that could be used and the physical plant shared with Madison Park can be further developed to expand both schools comfortably. Finally, and it really pains me to say this, but the proposed area is not welcoming to students of color. It is the polar opposite of the life-affirming location the school currently enjoys, where all students, all students are truly welcome and have access. The O'Brien is part of a future of an educationally equitable Boston. Please do not turn this diverse school into a state-of-the-art facility that is only used by Boston's most privileged families. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Kozu.
Boston School Committee, Superintendent, thank you for coming to the, my name is Michael Koz with Project Right. Thank you for coming to the Frederick. Little Frederick would have been so proud to see that the vision that she embodied is still carried on and I know that she would appreciate your kind words to the, the school leadership team. On behalf of Project Right, I'm pleased to thank you for allowing our staff, our youth and resident volunteers to partner with school, several schools, particularly in the Grohl Hall neighborhood, and we continue to look forward to working with you. We are clearly working together in addressing school safety and we acknowledge your safety team in providing support in the schools that we work with. We ask that the school committee take continued leadership for school safety and we ask that school resource officers have the process to be able to take police incident reports from student victims, families and school staff for incidents occurring on school grounds or on school transportations. Victims should not have to go to police district stations to file complaints when in the past, I mean, it just creates an additional roadblock in, in addressing their concerns. And in, in the past, Boston School Police took directly these incident reports. Also, there were over 12 guns confiscated on school property two years ago. We had the shooting incident outside of the Burke last year along with three, in three different city incidents, three gun sees from three school H teenagers, one 12-year-old, two 15-year-olds during the school day. We need all parties, but especially the school department to finalize and sign the memorandum agreement to, to improve communication and cooperation between law enforcement bodies and the school department. We look forward to working with your community connectors and hopefully they can also address the challenges that charter schools, schools are facing. We need to prioritize the safety of student, family and, and student, staff, victims of violence and provide the necessary support. With the impact of COVID pandemic, we need for substantial renovations completed to the ventilation units for the gyms at the Burke and Frederick. There was no reason why that these gyms that are relatively recently renovated or constructed, that they were unusable during the pandemic with no windows that can open and non-existent air circulation. We also had the past during election days at the Frederick where it's sonal-like conditions and the poll workers suffered throughout the election day. We also ask that there's an expedited plan to work with the city on identifying and renovating swimming pools in schools that are currently unusable for students or out of, out of school programs, that we identify where these pools are located and the lack of available resources in the neighborhoods, particularly in Roxbury, Dorchester, Mattapan, where water safety instruction is so critical. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anne Shinchiya DeGeorge.
Hi, my name is Anne Shinchiya DeGeorge. I'm a resident of Roxbury and a parent at Boston Latin Academy. Dear school committee members, Superintendent Skipper and along with BTU, I would like to sincerely thank you for documenting and endorsing the significant impact of family, community and caretaker voices and the critical need to increase family engagement at the school level by focusing on school site councils. It's desperately needed. School site councils, also known as the SSC, became a requirement in 1993 out of the Massachusetts Education Reform Act to engage families and students as equal partners with the school, which was identified as a core strategy for improving student performance in Boston public schools. The role of the SSC was for parents and teachers to serve with the principal as the central decision-making body of the school and provide oversight. The SSC is still the official governing body of each school even today. Making the SSC incredibly powerful and essential for all checks and balances, because no one person should be making the decisions for a multitude of diversity in each school. It's simply impossible to do. BPS adopted the school-based management, shared decision-making model to ensure a strong collaboration and partnership could exist between students, families, teachers and administrators to build community and make decisions together, setting priorities and goals and a pathway to achieve them in the CUSIP, the Quality School Improvement Plan, which all stakeholders should be involved in the development. As a parent, I cannot express enough how fundamental and essential building this partnership is and protecting it through properly running school site councils and school parent councils. Unfortunately, as you know, at BLA, we have learned, we have learned that not doing so can be severely damaging to us, most importantly, the students. All of this is to make sure that every child feels a sense of belonging at school. It is vital and must, must remain a priority to all of us. We should all feel welcomed at our schools. There's much more to say, but for now, I just want to note that during these first few weeks of school, every single school is federally required to have a big community meeting about the Title I funding that they receive. Every family should know about it and be invited. This is for families to decide where the Title I money should go for their school for improvement, as well as make sure that they receive the 1% of that money to the school parent council to spend as they wish. This does not happen in most schools. So I'd love to hear an update on that, on how many schools actually did it this year, because we've had a very sad rate in the past. Just, this is just the tip of the iceberg. There's plenty more. I feel like we need to have a family empowerment series or something every, at all of these meetings. For more information, I was going to offer my email at, as Anne, Anne, sorry, ANN@BEAC.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes our in-person testimony. We will now transition to virtual testimony. Please make sure you're signed into Zoom with the same name that you use to sign up for public comments and be prepared to unmute yourself and turn on your camera when it's your turn to testify. Please raise your hand virtually when I call your name. Michael Heisman, John Mudd and Mary Germanus Saba.
Okay for me to begin?
There you are, live from Dorchester. Michael Heisman, welcome.
Thank you, sister. Mike Heisman, Beja, Dorchester, second-class citizen. Words matter. Words can express our values and principles. Transparency and honesty, equity, community engagement, investigation. These wonderful words are often transformed into malpractice when you take action. Example number one, at the very end of your 8:30 meeting, Chair Robinson announced changes in engaging the community at your regular meetings. Meetings would be hybrid. Those community members like myself who participate by Zoom would be allowed to testify only after those physically present had their opportunity. Sometimes this would lead to waiting for long hours to testify at the end of, end, after most of the public had gone to bed. This practice is not equitable. This is segregation, which places second-class citizens like myself at the back of the bus. This was not transparent. We don't know who, how and when this decision was made. This decision was not equitable. The ratio equity too was not used, of course. Those with less privilege will be harmed. Your new, your new malpractice lacks transparency, harms equity, promotes community disengagement and is anti-democratic. Example number two, investigation, providing light and accountability for what happens. Attorney Tidwell's investigation really means Miss Skipper's cover-up. What I learned from the 8:30 meeting, the major thrust of the investigation was Dr. Casselius's personnel practices. The August 2022 letter from the retired black educators was not addressed. What Miss Skipper had done to black and brown central office administrators was not addressed. Many people, including myself, many times have testified about this letter since last October. Miss Skipper led the community to believe that this letter would be investigated. She deliberately misinformed the community. Miss Skipper lied. We don't know what you, what and when the school committee knew about this controversy. You are her boss. You have said little and have done nothing. Transparency and investigation has meant hiding, lying, avoiding responsibility and preventing accountability. This is not equity. The replacement of anti-racist black and brown educators with Miss Skipper's summer folk cronies is racist. Example three, moving the O'Briens to white West Roxbury and adding 500 more seats for mostly white children. This is community disengagement. This plan by the mayor and superintendent was made without the participation of the O'Brien community. No transportation, no, I'm sorry, no transparency. This plan was made in secret. What did the school committee know before it was publicly announced? Who knows? Once again, the public doesn't know what the mayor's appointed board knows. You keep secrets better than the CIA. No equity. This plan is racist. One word, hypocrisy. Almost done. Today you will give Miss Skipper your blessings and a nice pay raise. Miss Skipper should be fired. We need an elected school committee.
Thank you, Mr. Heisman. Our next speaker is John Mudd. Good evening, Mr. Mudd. Are you able to unmute and turn on your camera? There you are. Welcome. Oh, could you please unmute? Mr. Mudd, excuse me, you're having a little trouble with your audio, so we're going to move on to our next speaker and come back to you in a moment. Let's try Mary Germanas Saba. She's not logged into the meeting. So let's try Yoskania Guzman, and I'll invite our Spanish interpreter to support our next speaker.
Yes, good evening, everybody.
Yo soy una madre muy preocupada con relación al moverme la escuela O'Brien.
I'm very concerned, Matthew, particularly in moving to the O'Brien school.
So yo soy residente de Boston, del área de Roxbury.
I live in Roxbury. I'm a resident of Boston in Roxbury.
Estoy muy preocupada puesto que la transportación aquí no es lo más conveniente para los niños actualmente. No te...
I'm very concerned because transportation is not the ideal for the kids right now. Continuas, Yoda.
So actualmente, los buses escolares no están actuando a su capacidad. The MBTA, ¿a qué hora los niños deberán levantarse? Me dice que para mi hija poder llegar a la escuela, que es una niña de O'Brien, de diez grado, se va a tomar aproximadamente una hora y quince minutos para llegar a esa nueva, a la O'Brien in West Roxbury.
It will take approximately an hour and fifteen minutes for my little girl, she's only 10 years old, to be able to get to the O'Brien school there in Roxbury. So what is the MBTA doing? What is happening with transportation? Adelante.
So, ¿a qué hora tendrá ella que levantarse? A las cinco de la mañana y si algo pasa, como tenemos un weather tan cambiante, que los retrasos pasan, que muchísimas cosas pueden pasar. So yo sé que yo no soy la única que estoy muy preocupada y ya al momento que ustedes están decidiendo mover la escuela, es el último año de mi hija.
Momentito, Saba. So I'm very concerned. I am very concerned because what could happen? The weather here is unpredictable. I am not the only one. There are many parents that are very concerned. So we have to consider that she's going to her last grade there, so adelante.
So actual, la verdad, ella está muy triste. Dice que O'Brien y esta comunidad, ella tiene muchos amigos Haitian, tiene amigos negros, tiene amigos asiáticos, hispanos como nosotros, que somos dominicanos, muchos blancos. So, la verdad, me siento muy frustrante porque ella dice, ¿por qué llevarnos la escuela? ¿Por qué llevarnos la escuela para un área de blanco cuando aquí tenemos todo? Tenemos todo cerca.
Momentitos. So I'm very sad. This is a very sad situation because she has many friends. She has different friends from a different community. She has Asian friends. She has Black friends. She has Hispanic friends, Dominicans as we are. And she's going now to a community that is predominantly white. Adelante.
¿Por qué razón están tomando esas decisiones si en realidad no están tomando en cuenta nuestros niños? Que son lo que tienen sus dificultades para ir cada día a la escuela, para levantarse. Ciertas problemas, ciertos inconvenientes que uno no sabe porque uno es padre, pero uno no puede ver adentro de ellos.
So you are a parent, but sometimes you cannot see the real challenges they are going through. So they have to deal with different things. What time are they going to wake up? Different things, decisions have to be made.
Porque no toman a ellos como hagan una encuesta a ver qué ellos también pueden opinar, que ellos sean partícipes, porque ellos son los que van a la escuela. No somos nosotros como padres, no somos ustedes como comité.
But it's my suggestion, why not do a survey? They should be participants. They should be able to be part of the decision-making. They are the ones going to school. They are the ones making decisions as well. It is not you only as the committee making the decisions. Do a survey. See what they think, how they feel about this.
Thirty seconds.
Gracias y buenas noches.
Thank you very much and have a good night all.
Thank you. Our next speakers are Cheryl Buckman, Sharon Hinton, Ruby Reyes, Jake Deckerhoff, Jada Jones, and Mano Katso Menopakis. If you could please raise your hands virtually in Zoom.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Buckman. I'm a member of BPS Families for COVID Safety, otherwise known as SAMCOSA. I'm also a parent to a newly fifth-grade student at the Paul A. Dever School in Dorchester. I have been a longtime resident of South Boston. My question is, how does each school fall into repairs under the Green New Deal? And are all the 121 schools going to be green and friendly? The schools within BPS are on average over 80 years old. A good portion of these need major renovations to be up to code with standards. There are about 46,000 students and 85% are students of color, 75% are students that are low-income. There has been many decades of disinvestment, which is linked to racial inequities and injustices, which has resulted in many of our BPS buildings to either crumble or be forced to close. If we are seriously going to envision Boston Public Schools going into the 21st century and beyond, then all of the schools across our city need to be adaptable for our students and those with disabilities. For example, at my son's school, the playground is flooded for many days after it rains. The classrooms are outdated for teaching and for students to learn. We need to make the buildings universal and comfortable for adequate teaching and for students to learn properly. Another huge problem within BPS is the lack of proper ventilation. Three-fourths of school buildings do not have adequate ventilation. A lack of good ventilation is associated with airborne illnesses, toxic chemicals and agents that are left in the air that can trigger those with asthma, plus make it very difficult to learn in those types of conditions. Boston does face a significant challenge due to the ongoing climate change and the predicted rise in sea level by the year 2070. The time is now to bring everyone to the table to ensure that the next several generations have a safe and healthy way of learning. One way of doing so is reaching out to the BPS community. This needs to be done now and not another 30 years down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon's not signed into the meeting, so our next speaker will be Ruby Reyes.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, my name is Ruby Reyes, and I'm the Executive Director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance and Dorchester resident. Community engagement, or lack thereof, is supposed to be a factor in Superintendent Skipper's evaluation. She is nowhere near proficient in this area. The formal plan that was pitched as a proposal to community members to move the O'Brien School to West Roxbury is an example of this. The O'Brien community found out about this proposal through an email that was sent out while Mayor Wu and Superintendent Skipper were hosting a press conference with the announcement outside of their school. Reporters were notified, the four parents, students, educators, and most likely, school committee members. The Madison Park School community has been going through several years of community engagement over renovations of their space. Neither school community knew that they would be pitted against each other in the expansions and move proposals. The O'Brien School community is the most racially diverse and neurodiverse of the three exam schools. Moving their school to a largely white neighborhood of West Roxbury will physically cut the school off from more diverse neighborhoods of Boston, essentially ensuring that their exam school becomes largely white. Transportation plans are to include more shuttles, which will increase the transportation budget and carbon emissions, while also decreasing access for the communities that the school currently serves. Where is the green in the Green New Deal? Prior to the Garrity Order, which highlighted Boston's racism in BPS, former Mayor Kevin White had planned to build a high school in West Roxbury, which he said would be for majority-white residents of West Roxbury, according to WGBH archives. This was in 1973. Then the desegregation order took place in 1974. Why does this school committee feel the need to fulfill the racist promises of former Mayor Kevin White? The school committee has already voted to close four schools through merger. You have passed a budget that has placed over 610 staff under ESAR funding, which will run out this year. You did this without a plan to replace those positions. Is this what you want BPS to be? Do you want to contribute to supporting the long history of racism in Boston by making it more racist? It's time for equitable investment, transparency, and accountability. In addition, school committee testimony should be prioritized at the start of the meeting to center community voice and to leverage diverse perspectives from the start of the meeting. Moving public testimony at the very end of your meetings does not support healthy community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake is not in the meeting, so our next speaker will be Jada Jones.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jada Jones, and I'm a member of the Massachusetts Coalition for Health Equity in support of Boston Public Schools' Family for COVID Safety. I'm here today to urge investment in implementing dedicated outdoor air systems throughout the district, specifically electric heat pumps to heat and cool classrooms, and MERV-13 or higher air filtration systems, as clean air can contribute to increased productivity and can decrease the concentration of viral particles in the air, such as COVID-19, as well as can reduce asthmatic symptoms. Several parents have shared that their students have had asthma and have contracted COVID-19 within their schools. Between teachers, students, and staff, unhealthy indoor air quality continues to disrupt workflow, staffing, and the students' learning, whether it is related to viruses or triggering asthmatic symptoms. Implementing these interventions can improve indoor air quality, which is supported by the CDC and their updated operational guidance on May 11, 2023, for K-12 schools and early care and education programs to support safe in-person learning. Additionally, families have been asking for years for renovations, new windows so that they can simply open them for ventilation, for safe drinking water, for improved heating and cooling systems, and yet there's still no action for these schools. These are basic needs that are constantly being neglected, and I wanted to know where the urgency is to protect students. The people experiencing the consequences of Boston's lack of urgencies continue to be marginalized communities. Students of color, low-income families, and disabled students are constantly being failed by the city of Boston. I urge you that when an issue is disproportionately impacting marginalized communities, to then listen to the issues from their perspectives and not from the perspectives that are claiming they are entering a safe and thriving school environment. The countless stories of families have indicated otherwise today, and the communities that are most impacted need to be a part of this decision-making process. There's been several plans, several promises, and yet not enough action. Where is the urgency to protect these students? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mano Katso Menopakis.
Madam Chair, Superintendent Skipper, committee members, Ms. Sullivan, thank you for helping me testify once again, and I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person. Last week marked our 10th, first day of school in BPS, and everybody in our family, maybe the adults lower more than the children, are very excited to continue our learning journey in public education in our beautiful and diverse city. You listened to testimony and you received many phone calls and emails with plenty of data pointing to the unintended consequences that the new exam school admissions policy has created. Because of that, I will not repeat my daughter's story and how friends, the same race and economic situation as her, but with lower composite scores, received invitations as she didn't. You've also listened to testimony from the experts, experts that chose to play down situations like my daughter, experts that chose to omit very important information from their calculations and spreadsheets, information like the fact that one exam school focuses on math and science and another in Latin. So it's fair to say, Vice Chair O'Neill, that there's plenty of children out there that will choose one and not the other two schools, and that's okay. I really, really hope that you review this policy now and you adjust it to the equitable admissions policy that was intended to be. If you don't, we'll be looking at plenty more very smart 11- and 12-year-olds that will think that us adults either don't know what we're doing or we simply don't care. Thank you again for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you. We're going to try John Mudd once again.
Are we there?
Live from Cambridge, it's John Mudd.
Yeah. Are we there? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Good evening.
Sorry for my technological incompetence. My name is John Mudd. I'm a longtime education advocate in Boston and a resident of Cambridge. I have just a few brief questions and comments for the committee tonight. First, on the inclusion plan that is part of the strategic implementation plan you heard about earlier this evening. Will you review and have public debate on the policies in the BPS inclusion plan that includes multilingual learners that will be submitted by the end of this month? I learned just tonight. Members of the ELL task force were shown a draft and raised many questions about its failure to provide access to native language in instruction of multilingual learners and multilingual learners with disabilities, as we have recommended to the district and school committee for years. It, in essence, continues to implement the failed Question II policy of English immersion. The full committee, not just the chair, needs to see, to offer the public an opportunity to comment, and then to approve the plan before it is submitted. Secondly, on the master facilities plan, please be clear about what will be included in the master facilities plan by the end of this year. The sooner BPS can take a systemic, district-wide plan to the parents and communities for an authentic dialogue that has an explicit analysis of the impact of declining student enrollment, including specific recommendations based in equity assessments on school closings, mergers, renovation, and construction, the better it will be. A facilities condition report, education specification, and a priority-setting rubric is not a master plan. When will we actually see a master district-wide proposal? Third, the school committee policy setting. At your retreat, I would urge that the committee discuss how it can meet its responsibility to set policy for the Boston Public Schools, so that, for example, major policies included in the strategic implementation plan required by DESI do not go directly from the do not go directly from the district to DESI without a full review and approval by the school committee after an opportunity for public comment. And finally, on the superintendent's goals, we'll have time to talk about this at greater length. I assume you will start from the listing of areas for continued growth in the summative performance evaluation. This does include a priority for closing achievement gaps, which is critically important, but it does not include two other major policy commitments, which I would recommend that you add. The first of those you've had testimony earlier tonight about is teacher and staff racial and language diversity. And the second is access to native language in instruction and support for multilingual learners and multilingual learners with disabilities. Thank you for including me. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd. Chair Robinson, that concludes our speakers for public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspectives. Your testimony is very important to us. Our first action item is grants for approval totaling $75,985,591. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments.
No, no questions, but just sort of echoing the comments that you made earlier around looking forward to seeing the outcomes portion on this as we move forward. I just think it'll add another layer of transparency for folks.
Thank you. Mr. Meta?
Could we answer that question that, I forget who it was, but somebody asked about how many schools have the meetings?
Title I grants.
Title I?
Title I grants, yeah.
The title I grants.
School site councils.
Yeah.
Good question.
Through you, Chair. So that's data that we call, not all those meetings have happened yet. So their rosters are due October 1st.
They're still in the process?
Gotcha.
Hold on, Mr. Kuta.
Stay there, not so fast.
So I have two quick questions. And, Mr. Kuta, Superintendent for you, you may want to defer to Mr. Kuta. I'm interested in, as was said by the superintendent during the report, we had a preliminary estimate during the budgetary process, and then it takes a while for the federal government to finalize. It goes to the state. The state then works through their formula. It comes on to us. So I'm interested, Mr. Kuta, is how were the differences between what we estimated in the budget and what actually came through? Do we know that?
I do. Thank you for that.
I'm not talking down to the dollar, but how close were we type thing?
I should probably give you the numbers on a percentage basis because we're dealing with such large numbers, it'll seem we're much closer. For Title I, our original projected amount that we presented to you as part of the budget process was $45,600,000, $45,600,000. We then asked the school committee to approve the interim salary payments in May, where we had budgeted a plan for about $42 million. Our actual award amount was $43,571,000, so about a $1.5 million difference on Title I. For the other grants, they're both smaller in amounts, and our estimates were much closer. For Title II, the professional development entitlement grant, our projected budget amount was $3 million. The actual award amount was 2.7, so about a $300,000 difference. That one came in lower. For Title III, I actually don't have that number in front of me. I apologize. And for IDEA, the projected amount was $18,880,000. Our actual award amount was $18,465,000, so about a $377,000 difference.
Okay, great. Thanks. And I know particularly for Title I, it's based upon estimates of poverty figures for the city, right?
Yeah, the federal government allocates to local districts based on census data. And then the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education then uses poverty data from actuals the prior year. So for our award amount this year, they're looking at last year's poverty numbers of students who were actually enrolled in the district. So it's not a projection. It's a sort of a lagging indicator.
Gotcha. And that's, how do we feel that is impacted? I know, you know, it used to be fairly easy, right? We use the food, not fairly easy, but we use the food service forms. And when we went to free food service for everyone, I know we've had long discussions with DESI about calculating properly and more importantly, missing some populations, right? And so how are we doing on that? You know, how do we think, how close do we feel it actually matches to our population? I'm sorry, I may not be too clear on my question.
No, I think I have it. So the current methodology uses direct certification, those students who are enrolled in poverty programs in Massachusetts, so food stamps or mass health as part of the programs. And so what they do, what the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education does is a match of our student rosters to the data that they have enrollment in those programs, and that is the number they use for accounts. They also allow for districts to use the option of doing additional supplemental data reporting, so we can collect surveys of families who have not been matched to the program, but we have data to believe that they are experiencing poverty. They're at 185% of the poverty limit. That's a pretty cumbersome process, and it does require pretty extensive documentation on behalf of the individual family. So we don't think that that would actually net very many new families who would come forward as low income.
And what happens, Mr. Kuta, if we have, and you know, the superintendent mentioned before, we have had some new families coming, right? And if they're under the poverty figure, do we go back to the state for that? Or they just strictly base it on their number from our number from last year?
It's just the snapshot in time. So every year, there are students who enroll and students who leave, and we think it's pretty consistent in terms of year-to-year, the poverty count, so it wouldn't affect us too much.
Okay. I didn't know if there was an opportunity to get more support. That's what I was getting at with that. And lastly, and it's in line with what Mr. Meta asked as well, if someone had spoken before, I do know in the grant package, a note in the grant package, it says for Title I, 6.5% of the grant will be used for family community engagement. That's on the Title I spending, right?
Correct.
So I'm just, and I'm not sure if you're the right person on this or someone else. If you could just help me out with some of the ways the schools send that, spend that. Is that for the family liaison? Or is it for school site councils? Or, you know, what else is that spent on?
Yeah, I think, so one thing I'll just say, so the family liaison position, which we funded as part of a sort of quality guarantee over the last few years, those were general-funded positions, so they're part of the school's general budget. The Title I set aside for parent programs, different schools use them for different amounts of things. It could be for translation services at a meeting. It could be for hosting family meetings, providing food or childcare at those meetings. Also, increased communications. There's kind of a wide variety of ways that individual schools use them. As part of our budget process, we do ask everyone to submit their Title I plans for parent engagement, so, and we review that as part of the process.
I expect you to make sure it fits within certain parameters, but it's a school decision on how those funds are spent.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Kuta.
Are there any other questions?
Just, wait, do I actually have to talk into it?
Yeah.
Okay. So, just furthering, I'm not sure if, how would they count undocumented students?
In the case of the calculation, depending on the eligibility of the programs in which they're enrolled, the undocumented students would not be counted in this count. It is one of the things that when we shifted to use this direct certification for our own poverty counts in weighted student funding several years ago, we also did an analysis to find that on a number of metrics, we didn't find a strong correlation between schools that were serving high numbers of undocumented students and declines in the poverty rates when we shifted. And the reason for that is the form collection actually was fairly coordinated, correlated with who fills them out, what schools were entrepreneurial and taking a lot of effort in. It wasn't a much better indicator of the overall poverty percentage. So we do think that this is, while missing a systematic portion of our population, we don't think it affects system-wide our schools. And since we get our allocation from the state and then we distribute it within our schools, we think it's fairly the best way to allocate it within the district. Sorry, I got really in the weeds there on that answer, but appreciate it.
Fine.
Thank you. So if there's no further discussion, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And is there any discussion, objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the grants by unanimous consent? Bearing none, the grants are approved. Our next action item is a new admissions policy for Madison Park Technical Vocational High School. You'll recall that at our last meeting, the superintendent's team presented a set of revisions to the policy proposal that was first presented to the committee on May 24. In response to feedback from the committee regarding the potential for unintended barriers, the admissions team has simplified the admissions process by replacing the requirement for an artifact and two letters of support with a single statement of interest. Revised proposal still meets the goals of meeting current state regulations requiring all career vocational technical education, CVTE, schools to have an admissions policy and ensuring all students are making an informed decision and want to pursue CVTE. I want to thank the district for substantially revising the policy proposal based on feedback from the school committee. I will now invite the superintendent to offer final comments.
Thank you, Chair. So first of all, I want to thank the Madison Park team for putting together a very thoughtful admissions policy and for also taking deep consideration with the feedback that the committee gave, and it's reflective in the revisions. You know, it's a requirement from DESI to have an admissions policy for a CTE vocational school. I do think that this policy meets that requirement, and it also supports our students who are really seeking a CTE career path. So I fully support the proposal, the admissions policy as proposed, and I would encourage the committee to vote favorably for it.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to the committee for final questions or comments.
Thank you, Chair. Superintendent, can you, I know during the public comment, there was an ask for a working group. It sounded like folks wanted more community process, but is there any way you can just amplify or detail what community engagement did happen, if it didn't happen? Just so if folks don't know, at least we can put that on the record today.
So I would invite either Dr. Eccleston, Dr. Brown.
Good evening, everyone. It's exciting to be here in person. I think we did some pretty substantial engagement with the community. I want to personally thank the Madison team, who made this a key priority. There was engagement from, and I don't remember the exact number, but I think in some of the earlier materials, it sort of outlined this. There was significant engagement with students, with families, with the site council. There was a racial equity planning tool. The Friends of Madison Park, which is a community advocacy group who has really been supporting Madison for decades, had an opportunity to weigh in. The alumni community had an opportunity to provide feedback. And so there was a pretty substantial engagement process. And through that process, even in the first proposal that came forward to school committee and through the revisions, I think it really reflected the voices of members of the Madison community.
I have a follow-up, Chair. That's okay. For the alumni that were engaged, was that done through the official Alumni Association? Or was it just sort of like a call-out for?
It was through the official Alumni Association.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions, Mr. O'Neill?
So I also echo the Chair's comments in appreciation to the superintendent and the team for the adjustments that they made to this recommendation. It makes it a lot easier for students. And in talking with alumni of the school, that has been a request for many years of, you know, they want the students there who want to be there, right? And it's incumbent upon us to figure out how to get that message out to sixth graders, to eighth graders, or what the opportunities are in their families. It does bring up, Superintendent, the bigger question about administrative assignments overall, which, you know, at various times, various schools across the district have been the recipients of students who are administratively assigned. And I know there are a variety of reasons why. Obviously, it would be great if we could look in the future to reduce that number. And I think, you know, you talked about the reengagement center and the work that goes on there, and thank you, Dr. Elkins, for calling out because Manny Allen and the team there do a tremendous job in the outreach that they do. And I'm thinking about how, Superintendent, can we have an outreach program to our students who have not made selections, or families that have not made selections, so that administrative assignment ends up being an absolute, very, very last resort? You know, how can we work that number down in the future? Similar to, you know, an all-out effort we have on chronic absenteeism right now, right? And you've put a lot of attention, you've had a team put a lot of attention on that. I think, how do we approach this with the same intensity on administrative assignments?
Right. So through you, Chair. So I think, a few things. I think, one, I really applaud Madison Park for, and the committee, for being intentional in this, the last year especially, like really looking at seventh and eighth graders. How do we incorporate them? I think, given that it's part of their overall planning process going forward, to eventually have seventh and eighth graders is an effort to be able to get students who want and are choosing that CTE experience in the school and understand what that looks like. That's, you know, we will be in support and partnership with Madison to do that more broadly across the district. I think the issue of administrative assignment at the secondary level has, for a very long time, been of an issue, particularly because there are some schools that fill, and they are less susceptible to students who are not making choice, but by default are getting assigned. And then there are other schools that don't, that actually don't fill, and so they actually will get a disproportionate number of students who are not making a choice to actually be there. So this is an area that I'm going to drill down in this year with the secondary SOUPs, take a look at what we might be able to do as a system, both in the outreach, use the positions that we have within our schools. You know, building up early college, building up the career pathways is an opportunity to be able to do more reach back to the middle grades. I also think that as our high schools go to, those that are going to seventh grade, there's just such a unique opportunity to do that younger and younger within BPS and to really, both at the college level and the career level, be able to plant those seeds and build that in as part of the education. So what I do need to do is look at the data overall of it to better understand with the team the particular strategies we would put in place, much like we have attendance, much like we have in dropout. You know, there are particular solution sets that can be used to solve the problems, but you have to let the data and the students lead you to them. So we will be doing that because, you know, it is a concern. And I, you know, I think if we were to pull data on students that are administratively assigned, we might potentially see higher levels of chronic absenteeism, or higher levels of dropout, or, you know, struggles in the ninth grade and the entry grade. So we'll be looking at a lens of all of that as we really try to make that transition, be it from sixth grade into the 712, or be it from the eighth grade into the 912, more seamless.
I thank you for that. I, you know, I do think, particularly as a number of our schools have moved from nine to 12 to seven to 12, and we have specialties, right? We have arts, we have green, we have social justice, we have a bunch of different specialties. It's pretty tough in sixth grade, and obviously, a lot of the great trades at It's pretty tough in sixth grade, and obviously a lot of the great trades at Madison Park. It can be a little tough sometimes in sixth grade to know what you want to study, right? And to actually have that, figure out a way to really communicate it and to have freedom for our youth to change their mind and to try something else is pretty important as well. So I do think when we put a concentrated effort on things, as you've seen with chronic absenteeism in the past year, as we've seen in the dropout rate, this is one, to me, that calls out for a similar effort. And I think with your background and particularly about high schools, you get that.
Just thinking back to the first, to our first speaker, I mean, I think that what happens is districts develop a very narrow menu of how to serve a range of students that kind of fit into the boxes. And I think, you know, we have had periods of time in history here in BPS where we've done a much better job at it, of being able to really think out of the box. And if there isn't a program, so for instance, you know, that public speaker was talking about an out-of-district placement, that speaks to really looking to say, what is the program that could potentially support that student and that student's profile? And I think where there aren't those solutions, it's incumbent on us to do a good job inventing them, creating them, or seeking out partners that can support them, so.
Well, you know, I've been a huge advocate of our alternative ed program all along. I've said for many years, we have to have many arrows in the quiver because not every student is the same and everyone wants different choices and what's going to click for one isn't going to click for another. And we need the ability for students to, if it's not working in one place, and I really felt, and I'm glad you called out that first speaker, who pointed out to us that, you know, if a student fits in a box at BPS, then it's great. And if they don't, we struggle. And we need to do better on that. And whether it's alternative ed, whether it's special ed programs, whether it's making sure students have the ability, if they start because they're interested in the green economy, but now they're more interested in social justice, they have, should have the ability
Or have alternative education program that can actually serve students with disabilities or multilingual learners.
Absolutely. Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Gracias. Me alegra ver que y valoro mucho el trabajo que hicieron mis colegas del comité cuando hablaron de oponerse al artefacto y a las dos cartas recomendación que estaban pidiendo en la nueva política.
I'm very pleased to hear the position that the committee, the school committee took in opposition of the new policy that was going to be implemented. I'm very pleased to hear that, to hear your position.
Esto está bien y lo agradezco. Tengo una única pregunta.
So I only have one question.
¿Cómo van transparentemente en el caso que tengan que hacer loterías? ¿Cómo van a hacer? ¿Cuál es el plan? ¿Cómo van a hacer esa lotería?
In the best interest of transparency, if a lottery system is going to be implemented, how is it going to be executed in a transparent way? If lottery?
So specific to Madison Park. So I don't, I want, I'd actually, if Dr. Brown, would you both like to come up and just get some recognition for all of the hard work that you've done as a committee? So just the question about, were you to exceed applications for seats, what would be your process?
What I've done in the past at one of my former schools is put all the students that applied into like a lottery system in which we would make it publicized. And we would put it like in a big rolling machine and roll it and draw the names out in a fair and equitable way. Simply.
So we would use our own process, right? As we run any lottery or just in terms of those that put it in, there would be a waitlist that would be generated, were we to exceed the number of seats available at Madison versus those that are applying. I think the real issue for the committee was that the initial administrative, the initial application felt like it was requiring too much of students and parents and that we might end up with many fewer students applying because they didn't know how to enter the process or complete it. And so I think that you've done a great job removing those barriers. So really now, it's literally just working with their, you know, their teachers and so forth to sort of put their name in and say, here's why, right? Like, here's why I'm interested, so that they actually know something about Madison and what Madison has to offer. Then that, then they will become part of the lottery system and like any school, in terms of the assignment piece, if we go over the number of seats, then we just, we do a waitlist. And so Madison would then generate a waitlist.
If I can interject, Madam Superintendent and Chair, everyone there. We're so delicate on how we're doing this that if we do get to the point where there's going to be a lottery system, it's going to be the same where we would have each student still fill out our application and still prove that that's where they want to be. So it wouldn't be a situation where we're going to still have, you know, students not being able to have an opportunity. We're making it so there's an opportunity so that everyone can get in. Hopefully, we do get to that point where we have that many students at Madison Park, where we do have a lottery and we could still fulfill, you know, the numbers with having a huge staff that could fulfill, especially when we get to getting to seven and eight and then we get to six and seven and as many students we can get in as far as we get to the point of getting up to 2,000 students, that'll be a very good way of proving that we're one of the best, you know, CTU schools in the city of Austin. That's our goal.
In the state.
In the state.
Already best in the city.
I have a follow-up on the same conversation around the lottery. How are we going to navigate our, ensuring that the students that live in the city and in mixing with students that are outside? Is this lottery going to be only for?
Only Boston.
Boston.
Only Boston.
Strictly Boston.
Madison Park will not be a regional.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more questions?
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Huge kudos. Lots of work to the committee.
Everybody's all set?
Yes.
Okay. So if there's no further discussion, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the admissions policy for Madison Park Technical Vocational High School as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Verbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Our final action item this evening is the superintendent's summative performance evaluation and rating for the school year 2022, 2023. Evaluating the superintendent is among the primary responsibilities of the school committee. You'll recall that at our last meeting, Dr. Alkins presented the committee's summative assessment of superintendent skipper's performance, providing the superintendent with an overall performance rating of potential. I'm grateful to Dr. Alkins and Mr. O'Neal for leading this important process. I want to thank all members for their individual feedback, which I know the superintendent and her team have studied closely and will use to guide our work moving forward. I will now invite the superintendent to offer her final remarks.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chair. I'll keep it very short. Just, I'm indebted and thank you very much to the committee as always for your support, your partnership, your feedback. I'm looking forward to a lot of the work that's ahead of us and many more years of it with you. And just know that you have my full commitment, my team's full commitment to continuous improvement. We will continue to get better and better and take your feedback, incorporate it, and make sure that next year at this time, we've been able to deliver on the things that you wanted to see.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'll now open it up to the committee for final comments.
Thank you, Superintendent, again, and of course, for everyone in the district. You all have done a lot of work. I know that management, operation, family, community engagement are definitely something that we can continue to improve. Even if we're at our best, there's always going to be room for us to improve because our students are changing, our families are changing, our needs are changing. But I'm looking forward to it just by hearing all the hiring that you're doing and actually solidifying your staff and providing them a lot of incentives to stay. Of course, thinking about our students as well. How does BPS, and like you mentioned, this is not just a BPS issue or challenge or initiative. We have to engage with the other stakeholders. I'm a true believer that between the district and the mayor's office, there's a lot that we can do there when it comes to community outreach, how we're engaged, how we're utilizing the family liaisons, how we're utilizing civic engagement departments in the mayor's office to figure it out, how we can really spread the work that you all are doing. But even, for example, I know there's a Green New Deal open house on Saturday, there might be a hurricane, might messing up with that. So how are we making sure to communicating with families, like, this is not happening, but this is what, how we're informing the community, so how are we going to do that? But I just wanted to amplify that. Those are two areas that need of improvement, but I'm confident that we'll be there.
Thank you. Other comments? I don't have any. Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Gracias, Madam Chea, y quiero decirle gracias a la superintendente y decirle que tengo algunos pensamientos para ella que quiero compartir con ustedes.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you to the superintendent. I would like to tell you that I have some thoughts that I would like to share with you.
Aunque los miembros del comité hicimos una evaluación sobre la superintendente y su trabajo, tengo que decir.
We did an evaluation regarding your work and your performance, and that type of work was made by the school committee members. I have to say about that.
Que una verdadera evaluación le van a hacer los padres de familia, los estudiantes y las comunidades que son usuarias del sistema educativo público en Boston.
The true evaluation will come from the parents, from the students, from the community and from the district. They are the true evaluators of your performance.
Estas familias que todos los días llevan o envían a sus hijos a las escuelas públicas.
These are the families that have, that send the kids to the schools, to the public schools every single day.
Sí, que tienen que ir a un trabajo y a veces se retrasan porque el bus no llega.
They have to go to their jobs. Sometimes they're late because the school arrives late, they're late.
Que son inmigrantes que no hablan el idioma inglés y tienen que día a día lidiar con este sistema, que de ser aprendiz del idioma inglés.
So we have to consider that there are many challenges. There could be immigrants, they might not speak the language, they have to navigate the system, not speaking the language. Some of these parents, that's the case.
Aquellas familias que piden desesperadamente. Queremos tener más participación en las decisiones que toma el distrito educativo sobre nuestros estudiantes, decisiones que impactan la vida de nuestros estudiantes y nuestras familias.
So we have the families, they're claiming, they're asking very loudly that we need to participate for the needs to resolve the problems or for families. And they're saying this in a very high voice, they're claiming for this, they need this, they want their voice to be heard.
Estas familias que van a las escuelas y se preguntan por mejores ventilaciones.
So these are the same families that go to schools and they wonder about why don't we get better ventilation?
Que se preguntan, tengo interpretación en las reuniones del Concilio de Padres.
These are the same families that go and ask schools, do we have interpretation of their parent councils?
Estas familias que viven pidiendo al distrito por años tener, por mucho tiempo poder tener la evaluación de sus hijos con altas necesidades especiales en su idioma.
These are the same families that go to school and they do ask that an evaluation has to be made for kids with special needs.
Entonces, esa evaluación, quienes las van a hacer, son nuestras familias. Son verdaderamente quien pueden dar una verdadera calificación al trabajo que está haciendo la superintendente y su equipo.
So who is the true evaluator? The families will be the true evaluators and those will be the ones that will tell the superintendent, the superintendent, if the superintendent is doing a good job or not a good job, are the families. That's the true evaluation, the families themselves.
Estas familias son las verdaderas usuarias del sistema, donde pueden tener quejas por la comida, donde pueden tener indeterminadas necesidades.
Why? Because they are the users of the system. They are the ones consuming the food. There could be multiple needs that are related to our families.
Finalmente quiero decirle, ella no tiene ni un año como superintendente.
Finally, I would like to say that you, Madam Superintendent, have been here for only one year as a superintendent.
Estamos a tiempo. Podemos trabajar unidos con las familias. Podemos abrir nuestros corazones a que las familias sean parte, integrante de las decisiones que tomamos.
So we have the time, we have the time to invite the families, we have the time to open our arms, to open our hearts, to invite them to be part of the decision-making here.
Porque si no, ellos van a evaluar. Y la evaluación, si no cumplimos con sus demandas, su requerimiento, yo no creo que la evaluación pueda ser buena para ellos.
Because they will be the final judges. If we do not satisfy their requirements, if we do not convey what they need, the evaluation will not be that good in that regard. Thank you very much.
No particular questions. I think, I think we have a long way to go, as you've said it before. From my perspective, I think the tools that we've developed over years just, I think, need to be utilized more efficiently. And we need to understand what these tools are actually calling to action and where are the inequities that they are unearthing. You know, leaning into, we've heard time and time again about the history of this district and transforming it into an anti-racist district. That actually has threads into the opportunity and the achievement gaps that we're trying to close, that has threads into teacher diversity, racial, ethnic, and linguistic diversity. But also thinking about what are the barriers that it takes to remain an educator, remain a par educator, remain a staff member within this district. And I think that there's a lot that we can learn from these tools. And I'd love to see over the next year us really call attention to what these inequities are. And then further, how to hold ourselves accountable to that, whether that's thinking about seniority in classrooms when we're talking about teachers, as we're thinking about recruiting a newer and younger, like diverse teaching force. And it goes much deeper than that, but those are the things that I look forward to seeing over the next year. And thinking about new ways that we are considering progress. And I understand that it seems, it seems very limited at, like at times for student outcomes, but there's a number of different ways that we can see that our students are growing. And we need to be able to showcase that, you know? So I look forward to the next year.
Mr. O'Neal?
No comments.
No comments.
Thank you. I will actually make one comment, and it's similar to a comment I made last week, which was to thank Dr. Alkins for not only the work that he did leading this, but his very thoughtful presentation last week and actually going through the specifics of it. And also to the superintendent for her cooperation for the work that she did on the self-evaluation, which was just one piece of the puzzle that we all considered when we did our individual evaluations. But it was very thoughtfully done. And recognition that this was in effect an 11-month evaluation, not 12. And we see the difference already with the superintendent getting a running start for this school year, opening up this week. So thank you, Superintendent, for your cooperation on that. And I look forward to our next meeting, or when we have the workshop and we start talking about goals and moving it forward more towards SMART goals and seeing some of the progress, particularly on the academic side, from a lot of the great work that you put in place last year. So thank you for your cooperation. Thank you, Dr. Alkins, for leading the effort.
I just want to say thank you to you for this past year. And I think something, I mean, we talk a lot, many times a day sometimes. And I think the thing for me has been, as we continue to talk about the issues in Austin, these issues have been going on for 50, 70 years. And we've had several superintendents in the last decade, and the problems persist. And the question always is, we think we're going to get one person that comes in. And the question always is, we think we're going to get one person that comes in that can snap their fingers magically and all of these things will disappear. If that were true, we should be perfect, but we're not. We have one superintendent, we have almost 12,000 individuals who work for this district. We have 50,000 children, probably representing 40,000 families. And we have probably one of the richest cities educational-wise and other resource-wise than any other place probably on the face of this earth. And we have a failing school system. And so my issue is, you know, people want to blame or put that burden on the superintendent. It's on all of us, every single person who is any part of this city. I say over and over again, our children spend a lot of time before they get to us every day. They, they sleep in a neighborhood of the city that is part of the city overall and part of the districts of every single city councillor. They sleep in the home of a parent in a neighborhood. So there are other adults that are responsible. Then they walk out of their door and there's a neighborhood that should be hopefully making sure their walk to their school bus or walk to their school is safe. And then there are the school buses that really are their every first classroom that should be starting their day. And then they get off that bus, hopefully somewhere safe, and then they walk through their door of that school. And all of a sudden, our whole city thinks everything else that this child needs is on the back of the school. We should feed them, clothe them, do everything, but basically give birth to them. And then, oh, by the way, could you please teach them to read and write? We have a whole city. We have one superintendent. And I guess my issue is, how are we collectively putting everything that we need to do in this great city in place so that we're not having the same conversation another 50 years from now? 50 years of busing? Where are we and how are we not gonna, what, what did we learn? And what haven't we changed? And why? Sometimes I feel there are more people interested in our failure and not improving than in our improving with all of the brilliance that is here. I don't understand it, and I have lived my entire life in this city. So I want to say to the superintendent is, thank you for coming back and helping to lead this forward. But you cannot do it alone. And a lot of people take home a nice paycheck from this district every two weeks. And my question is, do the children get what they deserve from all of the efforts that we're putting forth? We spend a billion-plus dollars. And our children are in schools that should have been condemned years ago. But the issue is, we're trying to do something now. We're getting beat up over trying to do something now. And we're not going to be able to snap our fingers and have 120 fixed schools. So somehow, all of our heads need to get focused on the reality of what we have. How do we get started in doing this? And realizing, yeah, our kids will still have to go to school every day. And some school's going to be number one, and guess what? Some school's going to be a number 120. And probably most of us won't be around when that happens. But our kids still need a quality education. So I'm hoping that as people walk away, they walk away thinking about what can I do differently to make sure this superintendent, these teachers, these schools have the best shot at having the best year that they possibly can? Because we owe it to our kids. So, thank you, Superintendent.
Amen, Chair.
Thank you. If there's nothing further, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's school year 22, 23 Semitive Performance Evaluation as presented and provide the superintendent with an overall performance rating of proficient. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. And again, thank you, Superintendent, for your unwavering commitment to BPS. The committee looks forward to working together with you and your team to make this a great year for our students. Our main report this evening is a capital planning update. I will now invite Chief of Capital Planning, Dela Verne Stanislaus, and the Mayor's Senior Advisor for Youth and Schools, Rebecca Grainger, to please step forward with their presentation. While they're getting settled, I'd like to invite the superintendent to give opening remarks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to take a few minutes to introduce the presentation that you're about to see from our capital planning and city team. On Monday evening, the mayor and I had the opportunity to attend the premiere of the Busing Battleground, GBH documentary marking the 50th anniversary of busing in Boston. As I sat in the auditorium at Cash, among the leaders and activists who fought so hard for change 50 years ago, I was struck by the through line that connects their efforts for tonight's presentation and the district's long-term facilities plan. The grainy news footage and the old interviews tell a story of inequity, a story that still rings true today. 50 years later, too many of our schools are still failing our Black and Brown families in Boston. Too many of our students, especially our students of color, still do not have access to a high-quality school with state-of-the-art facilities close to their home. We're still dealing with the physical manifestations of racism, neglect, and indifference. We cannot change the past, but we can learn from it and we can impact the future. We have an obligation and responsibility to the children of this city to do better, and we will. When I asked Del to lead the capital planning team, we talked about how this work is so much more than physical spaces. We discussed how this work is about imagining and creating the type of experience we want students in 21st century Boston to have when they attend a BPS school. You know, when we're nurturing young scientists, they must have access to modern labs and outdoor study spaces like rain gardens to fully understand how physics and chemistry and the environment impact their world. When we're encouraging students to explore their creativity through the arts, our buildings must provide students with access to arts-related technology and well-lit studio spaces, as well as sinks and storage for art supplies. Beautiful buildings alone do not make excellent schools, but they do provide an essential foundation for the high-quality student experience that all of our students deserve. During the capital planning presentation tonight, I ask that we put our students at the center of the work. Today, we stand ready to acknowledge the harm of the past while charting a different course in the future for collaboration with the community. Over the past several months, the capital planning team has hosted 21st, 21th Community Conversations and has received more than 9,000 responses to our surveys. We engage in these thoughtful discussions about how we define the BPS student experience so we can consider what must change about our current schools to support student success. In tonight's presentation, you'll hear what the community has shared about what they want for our students. You will also be updated on how we are working toward a long-term facilities plan that will allow us to prioritize projects based on a rubric informed by the student experience and based on what our communities have or not, have not been provided with in the past. This work is so much more than brick and mortar. This work is about acknowledging the historical harm, addressing persistent inequities, and finding new, bold solutions to the problems that have impacted our students for far too long. Thank you, and I just deep thanks to, to Del and to Rebecca and to Tali, who's in the audience, for just, you know, working together to keep refining and listening to the voice of the community to get things right. So with that, I will proudly hand it off to the Chief of Capital Planning, Del Stanislaus.
Thank you, Superintendent Skipper, Chair Robinson, and members of the school committee. Good evening, everyone. As Superintendent Skipper shared, my name is Dela Verne Stanislaus, the Chief of Capital Planning for Boston Public Schools. I'm also a proud BPS alum, a proud resident of the city of Boston, and a proud parent to an 11-year-old son. I'm excited to lead the capital planning team here at BPS as we work collaboratively with all stakeholders to improve not only the physical spaces, but the overall experience of Boston Public School students. I am joined here tonight with Rebecca Grainger, the Senior Advisor to Mayor Wu on Youth and Schools, who will be presenting with me this evening. The work that we're sharing tonight is a close collaboration between BPS and the mayor's office. And we're here together in recognition of this deep partnership. This evening, we are here to share an overview of the work we have done, as well as the direction we are heading to bring forth a long-term facilities plan by the end of 2023. I want to be clear that the plan will not be a list of new buildings, renovations, mergers, or closures. It will not be a plan that reveals the fate of each school community. It would not be responsible of the district to present a plan that cannot adapt to changing conditions. The plan will include several tools to accelerate the work of shifting the physical footprint of the district, investing in facilities with clarity, transparency, and equity as our North Star. We must ensure that each investment is grounded in every student in Boston Public Schools having access to the high-quality student experience they all deserve. We will say high-quality student experience many times this evening. It is the driving reason we are making this choice to heavily invest in BPS facilities. Large-scale investments has been years in the making. Investing in our physical spaces are greatly needed, and we are in a unique moment to move forward. We need a transparent and clear process to do so, so that our decisions are always grounded in what's best for students and not swayed by the loudest voices in the room. Throughout this presentation and the work of forming a tool for decision-making, we will ask you to hold the complexity with us, which is part, which in part means holding multiple truths. While we are a district and city that is achieving amazing things, we are, we also have a lot of work to do. Despite the brilliance and hard work of our educators, the physical footprint of Boston Public Schools does not support our vision for a high-quality education and student experience. Boston Public Schools is the oldest public school system in the United States. We have a rich history of excellence and innovation. However, we must own that Boston Public Schools was built upon principles of institutional racism. Our buildings are a symptom and physical manifestation of these principles and years of deferred decision-making by district and city leadership. This has left us with a physical footprint that does not support our vision for a high-quality education and student experience. To put the physical footprint in perspective, as you can see the data on this slide, the deep disparities in our physical footprint drive disparities in the student experience. For more context, more than half of our buildings were built before 1950 and are in need of major upgrades. 50% do not have auditoriums or cafeteriums, which are important spaces for students to gather. Many do not have science labs, art rooms, spaces for small group learning, and modern technology, all necessary components of a well-rounded education. And many are too small with too few classrooms for each grade level to support our vision for inclusive learning for every student. This negatively impacts some of our most marginalized students, our Black and Brown students, students with disabilities, and multilingual learners. As a result, there are big gaps in what kinds of programs and services offered across our district. This is especially evident at the high school level. 53% of special education students requiring substantially, requiring substantially separate settings are concentrated in five high schools. And 61% of students in sheltered English immersion, SEIs, or SLIF programs are concentrated in five high schools. At the same time, our educators across the district are providing students every day with robust educational experiences despite the physical condition of our facilities. But we need to move with more urgency to create the physical spaces that can really support a high-quality experience for educators and for students. In the past 40 years, the city has built only 10 new schools in BPS, only 8% of our total buildings. While they are beautiful buildings, as you can see on the slide, this is far fewer than what is needed. The Green New Deal for BPS is a commitment to move with greater urgency. This is why we have been engaging in the school design study to help us accelerate this process.
Okay, I'll talk about the listening sessions, but I just want to second Superintendent Skipper's amen. Chair Robinson, your words, I could feel them through my entire body. It is the reason why I'm here in Boston and so thankful for your leadership. All right, back to the listening sessions. Last winter and spring, we held a series of listening sessions and community focus groups and had in-depth conversations with more than 500 BPS students, families, educators, and community partners. We asked, what do you love about your BPS experience? What is your biggest frustration or challenges? And what are your hopes and future for BPS? We organized what we heard into broad themes and problem statements and then reported back to the community through a survey later in the spring. The survey was posted in every school in BPS, and we received more than 9,000 responses. In that survey, we asked people to select the experiences that resonated with them and then prioritize the issues they want BPS to address through its capital planning and investment. We heard from people across neighborhoods all across our city that priorities that surfaced were reflective of what was shared repeatedly by students, families, educators, and various community voices and partners. And this is not the first time we've heard these things. As a collective community, we are in overwhelming agreement that we need a high-quality experience for every student in Boston Public Schools and that every student should have access to that high-quality experience close to home. We looked at data that was disaggregated by race and ethnicity, language and disability. So the priorities you see here include the specific priorities of communities that have been historically marginalized.
The collective priorities that were raised in addition to the problems and hopes for the future deeply informed the products of the design study. Coming out of the study, the educational specifications will be the benchmark for future school renovations and new construction projects. It will provide educational standards and guidelines for sizing and programming of spaces to foster rich learning experiences in our new or renovated buildings. The design standards capture the technical requirements for building new and renovated facilities. Together, these tools help provide a common foundation for new building projects and renovation, moving new projects into construction more quickly. The decision-making rubric serves as a clear, transparent, data-driven tool to guide where, when, and how we make investments in school facilities. The development of the rubric is grounded in the racial equity planning tool and designed to minimize adverse impacts on our communities. The decision-making rubric The decision-making rubric is a tool that would guide decisions on where we invest resources in facilities to support making the BPS high-quality student experience a district-wide reality. The rubric is grounded in the priorities we heard from community members throughout the winter and spring. It is important to continually center that the purpose of each investment is to deliver a high-quality student experience and provide that experience close to home. Guiding decisions on where we invest means that all of our proposals, new buildings, renovations, expansions, reconfigurations, closures, and mergers, must be filtered through the lens of delivering that high-quality student experience. What might this look like? The first step is for us to define what that high-quality student experience should look like.
Overwhelmingly, as a collective community, we agree our students must have access to high-quality student experience. The buckets are heavily influenced by the experiences shared and the priorities elevated. They also highlight the deep work and future direction of Boston Public Schools. So these buckets are still forming and evolving because we have more community sessions to do, but we want to give you an overview. So on the far left, a high-quality student experience means students have the access and opportunity to engage in rigorous and culturally-affirming learning experiences. This is really that academic learning bucket. The next one over, in order for students to enter learning experiences ready to engage in high-quality curriculum and instruction that is challenging and representative of the diversity of BPS, we must support every child's wellness. That means supporting their minds through mental health and social-emotional supports and their bodies with physical health and fresh and nutritious meals. It also means we must provide enrichment opportunities so every student in BPS can engage in boundary-expanding experiences to discover and explore their passions. Then, we must support the adults that support our students. By providing educators with professional development and support structures, ensuring schools have the staff to support students and families, that means counselors, family liaisons, social workers, nurses, licensed librarians, the list can go on. It also means authentic family engagement that invites families and as core partners in shaping the school environment. The last bucket, the high-quality student experience is also having the physical spaces to do so. And while these are grounded in our listening sessions from Green New Deal, this is reflective of so many other engagement processes and the many brilliant minds that I have the honor to partner with in BPS. The Green New Deal for BPS is about investment in physical spaces. Each investment must be designed to support the entire high-quality student experience. The majority of our schools do not currently have the physical spaces to do that. I want to emphasize educators and staff across the district are working diligently to achieve the high-quality student experience in every school, every day, regardless of physical space. But this shouldn't be a regardless situation. And it's why we've made an intentional choice with the Green New Deal for BPS to make investments into our buildings and physical spaces in service of achieving the high-quality student experience. You see, we're gonna get everybody to say that, right? High-quality student experience? Let's take just a moment on how the buckets of the high-quality student experience translate into physical spaces. So inclusive education will be district-wide in BPS. This means all students, students identified with disabilities, our multilingual learners, and our multilingual learners with disabilities are given the appropriate supports and have the access and opportunity to experience tier-one, high-quality learning and instruction. The BPS, the BPS academics department is working hard on the inclusion education plan to make inclusive education a district-wide reality. To become a fully-inclusive district, we also need the physical spaces to foster this type of learning environment. Fully-inclusive education requires multiple classes at each grade band. This allows our students identified with disabilities, our multilingual learners, and our multilingual learners with disabilities to be spread across multiple classrooms to better provide needed supports. Many of our schools currently do not have the physical space to have multiple classes at each grade band. One option is to provide more spa, one option to provide more space is to expand or build larger buildings, but this will take time. Another option is to merge smaller schools together into joined-school communities and house the lower grades in one building and the upper grades in another. This allows for multiple classrooms at each grade band. There are other options as well, but what this example demonstrates is how academics and physical spaces work together to achieve the high-quality student experience. We heard, especially from our high school students, which have amazing and beautiful voices as we went out and listened to them, the desire for athletics. To offer a variety of sustainable, high-quality athletic programs, a school needs enough students to field teams. This means student numbers to support multiple sports offered during the same season as well as the numbers to offer various levels, such as freshman, JV, and varsity. Sports also require certain spaces, courts, fields, physical training spaces, and so on. Therefore, increasing access and opportunity to participate in sports means having schools that support a population of students to do so. Last one. High school students also elevated the need for a variety of learning experiences. Offering advanced-level courses, early college and college, and career and technical education, CTE, also require certain numbers of students. And many of these classes offer more robust learning experiences when they occur in specialized spaces, like the maker space you see here. We heard overwhelmingly the need for music, science, visual and performing arts, and physical education in every elementary and secondary school. These classes also require physical space, often specialized.
With a common understanding of what the high-quality student experience look like, to build a rubric, we must figure out how to transparently measure it and then incorporate those measurements into the rubric. This leads to step two, assessing our ability to support the high-quality student experience now and in the future. That means asking questions such as, "What is the current ability of our physical spaces to support the student experience? What's the potential of our physical spaces to support the experience in the future with a building expansion or renovation or by combining schools to create a two-campus school?" One example of how to measure this is using the facilities condition assessment. This gives us details on condition of every physical asset inside each BPS building as well as a measure of its energy efficiency and sustainability. You will hear more about this in the coming weeks. We also have data from recent tours of every BPS building where our team recorded the size of classrooms and other spaces inside each school as well as things like whether the building is accessible to people with disabilities and whether it has large, flexible gathering spaces for community members. We also know that when it comes to physical spaces, the student experience depends not only on the building itself, but also on the site, our, or location, and on the surrounding community. We have the opportunity to think of the entire city as a classroom. We know that learning doesn't happen only inside school buildings. What happens around those buildings? On all of, on playgrounds, schools, sports fields, and pools, in museums, cultural centers, and community centers? All of that matters. So we're looking at the student experience across scales, the building site, neighborhood, and then the, and the entire city. The map you see here is just one example. The Higginson Lewis School in Roxbury is right next to Malcolm X Park, the Shelburne Community Center, and other athletic fields and historic sites. These spaces matter to the high-quality student experience. And we also know that it's not just the current reality that matters. Our shared history matters too. Which leads us to step three, prioritizing where, when, and how we invest.
We're looking at other data to help us build a decision-making tool to prioritize where, when, and how to invest. We're asking questions like, "Where has there been investment or disinvestment in our city? Where are there neighborhood assets like parks, community centers, and public libraries? Where are there greater neighborhood, where is there neighbor, greater neighborhood need or opportunity? And how might investments highlight or elevate assets or create new opportunities? And where do our students and families actually live? And what are the population trends across our neighborhoods that should inform where, when, and how we invest?" These are some of the questions we have been asking, but we know you and our collective community will have questions also. So we're asking truly and authentically for your help to make sure that as we build a decision-making rubric, we are asking questions from a variety of perspectives and vantage points to make sure we are looking at the right data. All of the data we use in the rubric will be public so that you can, so that we can do this work together. Over the next few months, there will be multiple opportunities to share input and feedback. Together, these three steps make up the decision-making rubric. The rubric will not provide a single solution. There's no magic formula for the right answer. And this rubric won't impact investments in ongoing facilities maintenance. What a rubric does allow is for us to test different scenarios based on the priorities and the values we develop together. It will provide an objective framework grounded in data for understanding the impact of capital planning proposals. This allows us to be thoughtful about approaching decision-making through a district-as-an-ecosystem lens and creates a framework to hold ourselves accountable for making decisions in service of achieving the high-quality student experience. This is consistent with the racial equity planning tool, which requires us to consistently monitor implementation and ensure ongoing accountability for achieving our desired results.
Unfortunately, due to the weather, we had to cancel this weekend's Rubrik Open House where we planned to bring the community in and share the work we have been doing on the rubric and get their feedback. We are currently working on a contingency plan and reformatting materials to share online. Next month, we will host a series of workshops to share the draft rubric and pressure-test it, look at different scenarios and see how they would impact students' access to a high-quality experience in Boston Public Schools. We hope to bring the final rubric to the school committee for consideration in November and December and, and include it in the long-term facilities plan by the end of the year. That means at the beginning of 2024, all future decisions about where we invest, new bills, renovations, and expansions, school reconfigurations, mergers, and closures will be based on a transparent, clear, and data-driven process. Chair Robinson, passing it back to you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Stanislaus and Ms. Granger for that report. And thank you and your entire team for all of your critical work. We know this is just one step in the process, and the committee looks forward to seeing how this rubric evolves during the community engagement process this fall. Sorry about Saturday. And I will encourage everyone to get involved. Want to give, open this up to members of the committee for questions, comments?
Thank you so much for y'all's presentation. I do like PowerPoints and I always appreciate it. Just ability to really taking your time on presenting like the work that you all have done and what is coming. When I first read the presentation for myself, I was like, "So what are we actually voting on?" And then I, I'm understanding more that this is the framework. This is the first step. There is gonna be opportunities for folks to actually engage with this. Like you said, it's to engage with scenarios, right? Because our city is always gonna change, so just creating a formula for a long term is not gonna be sufficient, right? Because then we're probably missing voices. We're probably missing some, some important stakeholders in these conversations. So I do appreciate that. Even with your presentation right now, definitely make that a lot more clear for me. What I wanted to ask, as I'm seeing, like, of course, the district and the mayor's office are working really closely on this, is what is the, I, I seen all the community process, the efforts, all the listening sessions that have been done. But is there any departments on, on the city side or any other efforts? Or even speaking on how family liaisons might have been helping out on like outreach to family to educate them or just share the information? Just wanted to hear a little bit more on who are those key departments? I also wanted to offer some ideas, and this is without really talking to you all one-on-one. So if you've already been thinking about that, that's awesome. But definitely thinking about with, with this meeting or open house being canceled on Saturday, how we can utilize the civic association meetings that are already, that are already happening? What events or meetings that some of our advocates are already planning that we can ask to participate? Just looking at spaces that already exist, and so we're not reinventing the wheel. And I know it's already, the time is already tight right now to try to find a new date. But even if it's just capitalizing off of spaces that are already existing right now. So just wanted to share that as well.
I can start then, Rebecca. You can jump in. So we have been working in collaboration. So the mayor's office, and then we've been working in collaboration with the city's ONS office, also the Disabilities Commission, and also the BPDA has been in our meetings as we work collaboratively just across different city teams to ensure that we have different voices at the table.
Yeah, and I'll also say that we very much see this as a collective, full-city project, which means it, it, we've also been hosting meetings to educate and inform people across City Hall and in other spaces so that they can also talk to the people that they're interacting with every day. As well as we're, we're trying to do engagement in a different way. The, the weather has, has given us a little bump, but we'll get right back on it, of inviting people in for one-on-one conversations, which means that there are, you know, members of- which means that there are, you know, members of both City Hall and BPS that speak a variety of languages, and inviting them in so that it doesn't always have to be through interpretation services, that, but that people understand what's going on to have conversations with families, so that we can get real, you know, authentic feedback and, and dig in. And that's been with departments across City Hall as well as BPS.
And I think one thing to add, because we're working with this team in lockstep, every step of the way in this process, is the city's operations team, and specifically the PFD team, who has been super close collaborators on, with us on this.
Thank you for highlighting the departments that you all have been working with. I think it's important, it just amplifies what Superintendent and the chair has shared, that this is a shared responsibility for all of us, and not just the superintendent and her team or the committee, but how can we tap into everyone that has some sort of expertise to contribute for the success of this plan? So I, I thank you for your presentation and the answers.
And we're always looking for partners, remember Barbosa?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you for the transportation and the work that you guys are doing.
A mi me gustaria, estoy curiosa por saber cuantos, cual fue la población demográfica, o sea, que, que participó en la encuesta.
The slide that we provided to you all shows the, the race and ethnicity makeup, as well as the relationship to BPS. So you can see what racial and ethnic groups responded. You can also see where people responded throughout the city. The priority slide that we showed was an accumulation of all of the different responses from those groups. But we have a report that shows it broken down also by what different demographics elevated as their most important priorities.
So we have to consider that many of the parents did not get the survey itself. Many did not participate for that same reason. So I need to know how many, what's the percentage of parents, or how many people did not participate for different reasons? How many parents were not included or took part of the survey?
So the survey was sent out to all Boston Public Schools families. The capital planning team also posted flyers at different community organizations, at housing developments, and flyers were also posted at schools. So it was sent out across the city to share with families. So in our, in response to the survey that went out, we got 9,000 participants. The capital planning team also attended events across the city to speak to families, to get responses to the survey. So with the outreach that we did, we got 9,000 responses.
You know, if we do also some quick math, if we've got 9,000 responses, about 50% were from identified as family or caregivers, which means about 4,500. Which means if we think about the number that was shared earlier, which is, let's say, 40,000 families in BPS, it means that we're, there's many families that did not respond. Which means we both have to continue changing our methods, which just to show the difference between the first 500 and the second 9,000, we need to continue improving to get more voices involved. So, and even just saying, you know, 4,500, that doesn't then break it up by the demographic groups, because even saying, or specifically, race and ethnicity, just looking at how that is divided up, the majority of our district is melanin blessed. They are black and identify as Latinx. And so that was about, you know, 45% of the respondents, which means we need to continue shifting our methods to both make sure that we are getting the majority of families that are represented in our district, as well as more people to participate.
I thank you very much for the answer, and I do appreciate that you guys have a plan in mind for the purpose of incorporating more families, or there could be more participants in this service in the future. I do appreciate the intention.
And you know, part of it also, and I know this isn't the question that you, that you asked, but is also helping families understand what it is that we're trying to achieve, so that as decisions are put forward and as people are invited in, they understand what they're being invited into and in service of what.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the report. I, I think this is really perfect, or I would say impeccable, timing. Particularly as we think about even a couple of things that were shared this evening with regard to the O'Brien moving to West Roxbury. And so really thinking about how this rubric and how you're going to assess the potential impacts of moving an entire school community. So I think this plan is, is, at least the rubric, like aspect of it, seems very much in line with what it is that we need to do. I'm curious if you've already started to utilize this in some way to think about like how this change is going to happen, particularly with the O'Brien community, and what the impact is going to be there.
Thank you for that question. So as a, so as a collaborative team, we're still working on developing what the rubric should look like. And this is where we're looking for community voices and your voices as part of this process to think about what data should be included in the rubric, in the rubric. And we should have, like, we should have a draft of like what the rubric look like soon, and start sort of like applying it in, in our, in our upcoming workshops that's scheduled. Just to make sure, with the community, sorry, the workshops that we have scheduled with the community, to make sure that we have the right data, we're thinking about this correctly, we're being thoughtful about all of the inputs in the rubric, to ensure that when we have a finalized rubric, to bring back to the school commu, committee in November, that it has all of the inputs that the community have identified, and us as a district have identified that we need to ensure students are going to get the student experience that they deserve.
The rubric won't be applied to current projects underway or proposals. But one of the things, and I feel like your question is both alluding to it, and we've heard it throughout lots of conversations, is how do we, we know we have so much to do, and there are so many facilities in needs, in need, is how do we create a transparent process that even if someone doesn't agree with what is proposed or put on the table, they understand how that proposal was formed? And the, the purple buckets, you know, as we think about the physical spaces within buildings and across different spaces, but we also need to think about the prioritization. And I think what's, what's really key about this, and while these organically came out of our listening sessions, and they'll, we'll be more poignant about them in the, the fall, we don't want to think about these decisions as a series of isolated buildings and investments, but rather as an entire district, the entire district as an ecosystem. That means that as we dig into historical context, like closures that have happened, or, you know, to again hit on one of Superintendent Skipper's points, desegregation, redlining, right? There are so many things that have happened in our communities that what, putting measurements in these types of buckets does is it helps us determine where in the, the city we invest, while actualizing the high-quality student experience for everyone. So I, I think what it will, will do is help us make more equitable decisions, more transparently, so that more people can be involved.
Yep, for sure. And I guess, I, I mean, even to add to your purple buckets there, the opportunities, the assets, I assume you're including in this the, the, the potential negative impacts, like of it as well. So I, that could be funneled under historical context, but I could also be funneled under the opportunities aspect too. So just making sure that's part of it.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a great point. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I'm, I'm sitting here thinking a couple of thoughts. First of all, deep appreciation for when we have some of the smartest and hottest-working people in the district and the city working together on this, particularly represented by you, Chief Stanslaw, and Dr. Granger. Really excited by the possibilities of this, because this is one of our biggest problems, to reflect back on what the chair was saying before, right? We are not providing high-quality facilities for all of our students across the entire district. We're doing a lot of things right, but we have a lot of room for improvement too. And the facilities are a key piece in making that happen to allow everything else the superintendent has been putting in place to actually take effect, right? So you can't cook a fantastic meal if you have the ingredients, but you don't have the kitchen equipment. And this is, this is the kitchen equipment, so to speak. And I also kind of helped to thank the, the chair and I in particular, and our executive secretary and, and others have sat in this room for a long time, since this building was brand-new. And we haven't been in it for three years, and yet we're back tonight in it for the first time. And it feels like it was just six months ago. I can't believe it's been three years since we were back here having meetings. But we've heard a lot of plans when we've sat here over the years. And many times we've been told, be patient, the next step is coming. And I'm getting to the point, I know the chair is definitely at the point of the patience is, come on, what's the next step? So I'm sorry you can't have the public meeting on Saturday, because I would have loved to attend, because I suspect you'd start off by saying, as you do these other sessions, vision for me, envision what you'd like to see, right? So I'm going to ask you the question that I'm sure a lot of people have in their mind when they have this. Envision for me what a rubric looks like. Just give me some rough parameters of what we're talking about. It's not, I'm guessing it's not just a grade or a score or something like that, is it? I don't know. Help me out with what a rubric will be that we'll be able to use as a tool to make decisions. And I'm probably putting the cart before the horse, as they say. You probably want to say, wait till December and we have these sessions. But I'm just curious of how you vision a rubric.
Look, we're looking back and forth each other, I'll start. Okay, I, I'm going to dream with you for a moment, Vice Chair O'Neil. So if we think about the high-quality student experience, we have to remember that Green New Deal is investing in physical spaces. So that means that all of those visits to every single school to figure out what the physical spaces were in it, we will actually be able to, and I don't think score is the right word, right? Because it's not that we're ranking schools against each other, but we can understand schools' current ability to actualize the high-quality student experience, right? So we've got almost that list of schools. Then we need to figure out what is the gap between the current and the potential, which is part of why we need to think at scale. It might be that a current building can actualize that experience. It might be that there are changes that can happen to that building. It might be that the parcel around it means that we can build a new building on that space, right? So now we can actually, al-most have like a, a list or a measurement showing the gaps between those spaces. Okay, so we hold that, right? Then we need to think about the entire city as the ecosystem. And to remember Alkin's point, that means figuring out where in the city we can have a really great effect by investing, and that that is grounded in what is the history of that area. And so that means having measurement systems that can actually delineate between those factors so that we would then know the effect. If we have those, we can then apply it to the list. I wish, do you remember those like, well, I was about to say Minority Report, but that's not the best one, because that movie did not end well. But you know how they're like moving things around in their, in their head? Okay, all right, that's how I'm thinking right now. I realize sometimes people are like, Rebecca, we don't want to be in your head. But you've got these lists, we have the, being able to prioritize across the city. Now we can look at the group of schools within that area of the city to know, you know, possibly that we need to close or merge or have new builds in that space. So what the rubric acts as is a guidance for all of those different spaces, so that we can figure out how to best invest. That might be, I know that when we like pictured or have our, our, our meetings, some people see that as maybe a, possibly a spreadsheet, like at the actual physical formation. It could be a grid or almost, you know, color coding systems. But really what a, a rubric does is it is gathering together measurement systems to, to be able to measure what our values are, because remember, all of these things are choices about how we make decisions, so that then we can prioritize where we invest. There isn't a right answer, it's what we decide to collectively do as a community.
Okay, so I, I think back to the evaluation process. Dr. Alkin's just led for all of us, and that was a rubric, right? That Desi provided that we evaluated. We separated it into four standards and, you know, five measurements within each standard. We agreed on what the guidelines were to begin with, and that kind of led us down the path of, oh, okay, well, if we follow this framework, we all logically came to a shared conclusion. We had slightly different levels on it, but we were still able to find a shared one. Are you envisioning something like that, where we're agreeing on, and I know it may be a bad analogy, but, you know, here are the standards that we all agree are important. Here are the different levels of, you know, measurement that are possible, and guidelines and explanations on that, and it leads you down the path. Is, you envisioning something like that?
Yes, and what the fall sessions will help us do is test out those measurement systems to make sure what the results of the rubric are agree with what the collective priorities are and the values are. So it's a bit of pressure testing and test fits to make sure that we have the right measurement systems in place.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate that.
No, like, if I, if I may, I think I'm, I, I got this, at least from their presentation, that it's also not necessarily about the, the decision-making tool, like per se, but it's also titrating out what are the, the specialized questions that they want to ask the community, but also throughout the entire process, because every school community is going to be different. So for example, a high-quality school experience is going to be unique, but you need to understand what are the specific questions that we need to ask in the particular way that they need to be asked, so that we can get the most robust answer. So I think part of what they're also outlining, at least in this slide, is also where those questions and the areas are, are going to come from. So there's a little bit of that, I think, embedded in that rubric design there.
Thank you. I'm not going to ask any questions tonight, because I'll take us down a rabbit hole. You all know where my questions are. I bring a kindergarten teacher mentality to this often, about wanting it to be as simple as possible, and I feel this is so complicated, and I worry what parents are going to take away from this, because I know their basic question will always be, but what about my child's school in the next two years, in the next five years? What am I going to learn? How am I going to understand? How am I going to put all of this together? So I know we're moving through the process of developing the rubric, but then I guess the question is, at what point do we feel that, as a city, we will be able to answer that question? I'm not saying I might like the answer that I get, because some of people are going to be happier than others, but at what point in this process, when will we feel we'll be able to answer that question that's burning for everyone? When will we have some kind of sense of next step for our community?
The long-term facilities, did I just, okay. The, I'm trying to, we're trying to do this, like, read each other. The long-term facilities plan will have three core pieces in December, the education specifications, the design specifications, and the rubric. That will lay the foundation for being able to have those conversations, for then setting the investments and priorities, so that then we can deeply dig in and continue to engage and have specific recommendations starting in 2024.
And just wanted to add to what Rebecca just said, it's one other component that's going to be a part of the long-term facilities plan, is the piece that our facilities team is working on, on the shorter-term investments in our buildings. So the long-term facilities plan, the components that sits on the capital planning for the longer-term investments, but also our facilities team is working on designing a document that they would share later on that outlines sort of like the shorter-term investments in our buildings.
Okay. Chair Robinson, also, I please continue to push on the simple. It's so easy to get stuck in the weeds of this. I have to say, if you ever want to talk about this at three in the morning, I'm usually sitting up thinking about this, because it wakes me up at night. And I think the push for us to take something that is so complex and to make it elegantly simple, so that people understand, is core to this work. So keep bringing that elementary mindset and pushing us on that.
Well, you know, my two words for this year are simplify and urgency. The time is now. It's urgent, but it's got to be simple, so we can all understand it and get behind it. Thank you.
Should make that into a T-shirt.
Thank you again, and we look forward to our next steps. Ms. Sullivan will now move on to public comment, our reports.
Thank you, Chair. We have no speakers for public comment.
Thank you. Any new business? That concludes our business for the evening. The next school committee meeting will take place in person here on Wednesday, September 27th, at 6:00 PM at the Bowling Building. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none?
Can assume unanimous consent.
Oh, yes. Is there any, no. Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and have a good night.